Federal assistance. And I couldn't even tell my mind, even though I graduated early, took pre-tal from the late great.
Wow.
So I joined the military. I got a.
I'd like to hear your presentation today. Or your comments.
You know the fun thing about this? Nobody's ever, so I handed in a two hundred page. I got three minutes of them. And they systematically ran the corruption to the city mayor and attorneys. One guy. They shook them and then they try to, then they bang up the reporter. Give her job. That go on. You ask the question, you should sorry you asked. It's Munson, right?
You know. Next week.
You know what, there is no second page here.
It's supposed to be this. But that's for a time of all my whole. Yeah, I think we did it.
That's what it should be.
Uh, please forgive us, uh, we actually trying to print out some more agendas. Uh, it was a mistake and page two was not included in those agenda.
Why aren't we on page two?
Well, we gonna make sure we put a, we reprint them so we can give you a page two. Yep. There's don't.
Alright.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, good evening one and all, this meeting of your Pontiac City Council for Tuesday, July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, is hereby called to order. Uh, the clerk's office is generated additional copies so that every audience member can have every page of the agenda, so you can follow through, we also will have visual reinforcements as well on the screen. Uh, the meeting is called to order, I give the floor to Councilman Parker to introduce this evening's invocation.
Thank you, President McGinnis, I'd like to introduce here wanted to pass from Lilious Berry from the Word Believing Christian Center, he's gonna give us our invocation.
Thank you, may we all stand and bow our heads. Father, we thank you for this day, in this moment, we thank you for all that you have done and what you're doing in the midst of us even today. Father, we thank you for the wisdom and the guidance for our mayor and our city councilmen. Lord God, that you would guide them and lead them, give them the wisdom, give them the understanding, the best decision for this city, for the residents of this city, that Father God, that the choices and decisions they make will benefit the residents, Lord God. And so, Father, we thank you now for all that you are doing, we thank you for peace, we thank you for harmony, we thank you for being on one accord, Lord God, that we move in the same direction, Father God, that this city, the city of Pontiac, will be a city, Father, that you would be pleased of. And so, Father, we thank you now, that Father God, as this meeting go forward, we thank you, Lord God, for oneness. Father, we give you glory, honor, and praise, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. And everyone said, amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, we remember those that we have lost since our last gathering as a community, uh, those that you personally know and those that we may never have met, please join us in a moment of silence honoring our community members. Thank you, you may be seated. I'll pitch hit for Clerk Doyle to roll call, uh, Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, District One.
Present.
Councilman Brett Nicholson, District Two.
Here.
Councilman Mikhail Goodman, District Three.
Here.
Councilwoman Kathleen James, District Four.
Here.
Councilman William Parker, Junior, District Five.
Here.
President Pro Tem William A. Carrington, District Six.
Present.
Mike McGinnis, District Seven, present, all members are present and accounting for, quorum being established. Uh, no need to authorize or excuse any council members from the meeting since we're all here, but we welcome back Councilman Goodman, who last week was in uh, the bright lights of Washington DC at the White House this time last week. Uh, is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Support. Let me move, I'm sorry.
That's for.
I'm moving fast.
It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Goodman, so that motion is now before us. Uh, Councilwoman James, do you have a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, I do, uh, Mr. President, I make a motion to amend the agenda tonight, uh, to add, uh, to approve a discussion on the Galloway Lake Park easement that was granted to the WRC.
Galloway Lake Park easement would be the new number six under discussion, so it would be discussion and number six. That has been moved, is there a second?
Support.
Support.
Uh, it was seconded, I believe, first by Carrington, so it's been moved by James, seconded by Carrington that we amend the agenda to add that discussion item, any discussion on that matter? Hearing, no discussion, roll call on approval of that amendment, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries, we are back to the main motion, approval of the agenda as amended, are there any other discussion, questions, clarifications, changes, amendments? Hearing, no further discussion, we shall vote to adopt this evening's agenda as amended, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Goodman, not a debatable motion, just want to identify for the community's benefit, included in this evening's consent agenda are last, uh, the July fifth City Council meeting minutes, the July eleventh Economic Development Housing and Planning Subcommittee meeting minutes, the July twelfth City Council meeting minutes, the July fourteenth Finance and Personnel Subcommittee meeting minutes, and the City of Pontiac Fund July Financial Statement Report. Roll call on approval of that motion on, on the adoption of the consent agenda, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries, we are now at special presentations, of which we have one this evening. Uh, we have before the city of Pontiac and all, all voters within the boundaries of the school district of the city of Pontiac, um, there is an operations restoration, uh, millage, uh, district operating millage restoration proposal. And so, uh, per community members' request, just want to give some context on what is before voters. Uh, so, this is a non-homesteads millage, meaning it is not for those primary homeowners, this is, uh, for mainly commercial property, but any property that's not, um, established as homestead with Oakland County. So as part of proposal A, in nineteen ninety-four with the state of Michigan, school districts are required to levy eighteen mills on its non-homestead tax base in order to receive full funding. And, uh, that eighteen mills, though, is subject annually to a rollback caused by a, a headly amendment to the Michigan Constitution in the late nineteen seventies, uh, so that if the total taxable value of non-homestead properties is greater than inflation, it's rolled back, uh, that amount. Uh, this occurs when a property such as mainly in this instance, uh, for non-homestead, commercial property, uh, that value is reset due to it being sold or improved, the result is a millage levy less than the eighteen mills. And how Michigan school districts address this issue, they can, uh, one, hold elections annually, or they could do it periodically as the need arises. Uh, so obviously, if an annual election was held, sometimes we'd have elections just for that question, which would be costly, uh, to taxpayers and, and might not get higher participation or turnout. Uh, the other option is to do so periodically, um, so that way the school district is always working to try and levy the full mills. When we vote in August, uh, our neighboring school district Bloomfield Hills is doing the very same thing, a restoration proposal. Um, Berkeley Schools did so in May, Clarkson and South Line have done so recently. And in two thousand sixteen, we, the voters of Pontiac School District, did the same, uh, there was a twenty-year, um, mill, uh, that was approved for non-homestead operating millage, um, purposes, but there was also a point five oh mills that went to the voters and was approved to basically allow for that, build in that buffer, so as the headly rollback, rollbacks happen year after year, they're always have enough to get the full eighteen mills. And that's what's been happening for us, that all of the city of Pontiac is located within this school district, uh, uh, and basically in the last six years, that's held steady until now, and that's due in many different factors, including sale of commercial property, improvements to non-homestead property, a different property transactions, and so in the last six years, that extra buffer of point five zero has whittled away. And so, in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, if not adopted, uh, by the voters, this, the school district for the, the school district for the city of Pontiac, uh, will drop below eighteen mills for this coming year, which would lead to, in this first year, about two hundred thousand dollars in lost revenue, and that's revenue that's being kicked off or generated by non-homestead properties. Uh, so that's the dollar amount, um, the first year, it'll be about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, is estimated that the school district would not be able to collect because it no longer has that buffer to get it to the full eighteen mills. Uh, but each year it keeps growing more and more, uh, to, in a few years, it would be over two million dollars annually, uh, that would not be able to be collected because that rollback keeps rolling back as inflation and, and the property improvements or property sales continue. So a school district in Michigan can never levy more than eighteen mills annually, so that would be true if this was adopted, um, that even if, though it goes above the eighteen mills, that's legally for the entire state of Michigan, it can never go higher than that. And what's before voters would expire in two thousand thirty-six, which is the same as the current millage, so they're not kicking the can further, it's just sort of adjusting to create that, that buffer to be able to get up to eighteen. So, this is a little bit small for those in the audience, but I, this is the literal, technical language that will be before voters. This proposal would restore and increase the limitation on the amount of taxes which may be levied in the school district of the city of Pontiac for general operating purposes by two point zero zero mills on all property except principal residence and other property exempt by law. This authority, if approved and combined with the school district's other unexpired authorization, would allow the school district to continue to levy the statutory limit of eighteen point zero zero mills on all property, except principal residence and other property exempt by law in the event of future headly rollbacks. Shall the limitation on the amount of taxes which may be imposed on all property, except principal residence and other property exempt by law in the school district of the city of Pontiac, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, be increased by two mills, which is, they're showing two dollars on each one thousand dollars of taxable value for fifteen years, the years two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and thirty-six, inclusive to provide funds for operating expenses, this millage would raise an estimated two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars for the school district in the first year that it is levied. So just want to put that before you, since questions were shared with City Council, it's not a direct City Council matter, but obviously impacts all residents of the city, so we want you just to have some of that, that information as best we know it. Uh, and with that, I want to turn it over to colleagues, uh, and administration, if you have any questions or feedback on that special presentation. Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
I'm just wondering why no one from the school district came to present this, because it's so much misinformation that's being given out and, and it makes people hesitant to vote for it, so it would have been better, not saying it wasn't a good job with what you did, sir, but they're, they need to have proper representation here to make the common person understand what the millage really is. So I, I just think that that need, that reach out should, needs to happen before, we have sixteen days before the vote, I believe.
We did extend that opportunity, and that's an open invitation, so there's still a few more meetings if, if they would like to elaborate further. This is information provided by the school district and, and research done by the, the business manager, the, the finance director, Mr. James Graham. Uh, and that is all available on this, on the school district's website, my understanding, I, I'm in a funky house because the US Postal Service sometimes rejects mail, it doesn't line up with my voter address because of Union Court versus Union Street, long story short, I personally haven't got it, but my understanding is that households in Pontiac were receiving a mailing from the school district that also had that information. I don't know if anyone else has gotten that, but I know I often miss it based on my address. But I, thank you for raising that, and so that's an open opportunity, uh, in the few meetings that we have remaining before the August second, uh, general election, I, or, excuse me, primary election, I want to point out that falls on a Tuesday, per state law, and so we will not be having a city council meeting that Tuesday, August second, it'll be Thursday, August fourth instead.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, other discussion or feedback on this special presentation? Alright, hearing no further discussion, we move on, uh, to the next item on the agenda, current employment opportunities with the city of Pontiac. Uh, the city council has a posted position for outreach specialist, uh, which we are currently, uh, receiving applications and consider candidates, but want to give the floor to the administration to elaborate on the many employment opportunities, uh, where the city is currently hiring, uh, that's built in, uh, as a function of the budget that we've recently adopted, there's a lot of hiring, um, that the city hopes to do, so want to give the mayor and administration opportunity to, um, elaborate further and let the community know how you can pursue those opportunities.
Thank you, uh, President McGinnis, and yes, we have a lot of open positions here at City Hall, and we'd love to fill them with as many city residents as possible, and to get into all the details, I want to turn the floor over to Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor Gramo, uh, Council President.
We, uh, have twenty-three unique positions that are available right now, and our HR Director, Ms. Angela Benitez, just, uh, entered, and so I will actually yield the floor to her to, to give, um, even more in-depth, um, information.
Hello, good evening, uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilman and Woman. Uh, yeah, so we actually have twenty-six positions that have been posted, and I'm happy to say that the level of applicants that we have gotten has been tremendous, very qualified, and I don't know what's happening in the other municipalities, but a lot of people wanting to come over here to the city of Pontiac from different municipalities, and so, um, we have been doing many phone screens, so our process is reduce phone screen to, um, kind of determine whether or not these people should go to the next round, and so that's what we've been doing. So just this week already, we've done like eight phone screens, and we still have more to do tomorrow, as soon as we get them, um, they let us know that, hey, I'd like for you to, um, interview these individuals, we're doing them right away, and then we give them our uh, thoughts about whether or not they should move to the next round, and then once they do, then we're going ahead and getting them, um, into in-person, in-person interview. So, um, that's kind of where we are in the process, the process is working, and like I said, we, um, just in posting these, um, in our system and online with the city of Pontiac, we are getting a very good response.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rutherford and Councilman Nicholson.
You say you have twenty-six positions?
Yes.
Could you name some of them that are available?
Yes, city, um, engineer, which, um, we got a very good applicant, um, he actually worked for the city of Dearborn for thirty-three years, he retired, and now he's tired of sitting at home, he wants to come back, we've gotten a number of individuals for the code enforcement and, um, inspector position. We've gotten individuals for the grant writer position, almost every position that we have posted, we have, um, at least one applicant, um, and, and that's a rare, uh, because most of them, we have several applicants for those positions, and, um, community development director, communications director, community, and we have outreach specialist that we, um, just posted, and we actually did get, um, a candidate for that, so, um, we have, um, just a number of positions that are available.
On follow-up, Councilwoman Rutherford.
Thank you, so what's exactly the timeline for certain positions to be filled, like for example, for code enforcement, do we have a timeline in place? For rental inspectors, do we have a timeline in place, and most importantly for me, for the outreach specialists, do we have a timeline in place for when they're actually from the hire, from the process of, uh, screening to actual hiring, is there a timeline, and if so, what is it?
Yes, so I have a very aggressive timeline, and so I'm always looking to, to get everybody's in, interviewed, and into position, um, within like two to three weeks, that, um, they'll determine, you know, that depends on how fast, um, we can get them in for an in-person interview. Understanding that some of these individuals are working other jobs, and so they may have to give two to four weeks notice, and so that may be what the holdup is in, on some cases.
Alright, thank you.
Councilman Nicholson.
I just wanted to say thank you for being so responsive to the residents in District Two that have applied for positions, uh, I, I have heard from many that are very excited about seeing these roles and seeing that they have, uh, the skills and abilities, uh, to, to potentially be, um, an employee of the city. Um, but I just wanted to say thank you, they have taught, only talked about how professional the process has been, that they get immediate responses, saying thank you for your application, this is your, our, your expectation, uh, to hear from us, and that we're following that expectation, you know, too often I hear from people where, you know, they're applying for jobs and never hearing anything, or they just feel like it was a throwaway process, and, and I'm glad that, especially as our residents are excited to apply for these jobs, that they're being treated in a way where their, their quality, um, experience is, 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 uh, being noticed, thank you.
Thank you, yes, and we're being fair in the process, and we're wanting to make sure that if we ask, uh, Person A these questions, Person B are gonna get the same questions, um, during interviews, so, we're happy, everything's going great, and we're, like I said, we got some great candidates, so.
Thank you, other discussion? Do, Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
I just have a couple of questions, are you the primary interviewer, and if not, uh, do you also have some assistants, I know we had an assistant there, is that?
Yes, I do have an assistant, and I'm really glad to have her here, she's from, um, United Wholesale Mortgage is where she previously worked, she's here, and She's here, and she's just got a great bubbly personality, and I think that's what Councilwoman Nicholson is, was what, hearing from what people are saying, is that she is, she's very able, she's a person is able to look past the resume and ask the questions and see like, well, maybe you don't have 100% of the skillset that we're looking for, but we see something in you, and we see, you know, your desire to work for the city of Pontiac to make things better, and so, yes, to answer your question, yes, I do have someone helping me.
Thank you. Others who wish to have the floor? I just want to, Councilwoman Rutherford?
So in the interviewing process, I just want to make sure I have clarity, it's you, that other person, there's nobody else involved, correct?
So for the screening process, HR is doing the phone screening. So then we pass it over to the department directors and say, we recommend these individuals here, based on our phone screen, these are the individuals that we recommend, and then it's up to them to follow through and to get them interviewed. Now, we may, if they ask us, be involved in that process as well, but it's really up to them to take the ball and run with it and get them interviewed and let us know, hey, we want to make an offer, and then we can go ahead and do that for them.
Thank you.
Pro Tem Carrington, then Councilwoman James.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I guess my question is, you mentioned that some of these positions only had one applicant?
Yes.
Would you be waiting to hopefully get at least three applicants before you pull the trigger on those positions?
Yeah, so we want to have at least a couple of applicants so that we have something that we can weigh one against the other, and we're looking every day to see how many applicants we have. And so we have different resources to find applicants, so it's great that they're coming to our website and they're applying, but we are also Michigan Talent Bank, we also use Job Target, and we have that through Payocity, and they send out our jobs to almost like 400 different sites for us. So we're looking every day just to see kind of where we are in communicating with the department directors and saying, hey, you know, you have 15, do you want us to keep going and get you more, or do you see somebody that needs 15?
Pro Tem.
Just one quick follow-up question, so if that one applicant doesn't meet the criteria of what you're looking for, you can continue to look for other candidates?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Yes, my question is about the park manager. Since we don't have a Parks and Rec department for that individual to be interviewed by, who would be interviewing that? Would it be the administration, mayor, deputy mayor?
I believe that we, so we do have Ms. Taylor, who is our youth rec manager, so I think that she would definitely be one of the individuals that would participate in the interview process. And then, like I said, myself, we're always available, the deputy mayor, the mayor, we're all available to do these interviews.
Want to give the floor to Mayor Grimal, he might have further?
Yeah, just to clarify, when it comes to department directors, the initial screening is done by Director Benitez, and then the deputy mayor and I interview applicants for department directors. I think in this case, because the parks manager would be reporting to the Parks and Recreation Department Director, which is also a newly created position, will likely be waiting to select a parks manager until after we select a Parks and Recreation Department Director, so that that director can then lead the effort to hire the manager who will work for her or him.
Councilwoman James.
So are you saying, so the Parks and Recreation Manager is one of the, a director, is one of the 26 positions, but not the park manager?
They're both newly created positions, and they're both going to be hired in the near future. But what I'm suggesting is that we ought to hire the Parks and Recreation Department Director first, so that that department director can hire the division manager.
Yeah. That was my concern, that, you know, who would be the person, so that makes sense.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Preaching to the choir, to my colleagues, I know, but this is obviously where the rubber meets the road in terms of us being able to improve a lot of services for residents to improve the quality of life for our city. We have a lot of needs, and we've, through the budget, identified, you know, staffing those needs, but your process and your shepherding of these needs are very crucial, so we're grateful for your professionalism, and to the administration, including yourself, if there's any systemic or operational barriers that you're running into, just let us know so that we can course correct earlier on, rather than many months where those positions essentially are dormant, where we want them to be active and fully operational.
Yes, thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, thank you very much for your time. We are now at the item number three on the agenda, the second discussion item, forensic audit status update for the council and the community. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'd like to turn the floor over to Deputy Mayor Stevens, as he's been in direct contact with the forensic audit firm.
Thank you, Mayor. As reported in our last subcommittee, the forensic auditors are coming to the close of their investigation, and they are actually scheduled to come and present to city council in two weeks. Originally, they were ready to come on August 2nd. However, August 2nd is in fact a primary election day, and we will not be having a council meeting, we will be having the council meeting on August 4th, so they will be here on August 4th to give their report to the city council and to the community.
Discussion, Councilwoman Rutherford.
That's great news. Quick question, Deputy Mayor, will the information that they give us, will it be open to the public for they can see it as well, or is it just going to be given to just the council?
So that is a great question. The answer to that-
Stevens, I'm just being technical with the-
Sorry.
You have the floor.
Yes. The answer to that question is twofold. There will be an executive summary that they will actually deliver on the floor, that will be for everyone, and then there will be a written report that will be given to council that will have some information in it that is, of course, proprietary to council.
Okay. My other question is-
On follow-up, Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Thank you. My other question is, do we have any legal duty to, if someone currently served, to give them legal representation if something is found, if they no longer serve for the city?
I will defer to the mayor to answer that question, because it's a very delicate answer.
Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
I think it's, I think it's a very nuanced answer, and so I don't want to, you know, be perceived as giving some sort of binding legal opinion by any means, but I think it depends on the nature of the issue. If it's simple negligence, probably the city would provide some legal representation, and I would note that probably not just the individual would be sued if there were a lawsuit over something, but the city itself would be sued. So in that kind of a context, the city would probably provide legal representation, even though it may not technically have a legal obligation to do so for the individual, but if there were some sort of intentional wrongdoing or criminal activity, which I would be somewhat surprised if that came out, but if, you know, speaking in hypotheticals, then I think it's much less likely that the city would have any obligation or any desire to provide representation to somebody who was found to have intentionally done something wrongful or criminal in nature.
Thank you.
Other further discussion? The Finance and Personnel Subcommittee each month has been getting updates on the forensic audit update, and since we anticipated that more information would be shared with the full council and the community, we wanted to give that sort of time check-in. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Nicholson, you have the floor.
For the community's benefit, the proprietary information that would be shared by the council, what, only to the council, what types of information usually is that, as far as why would we go into closed session, or why would we get that information proprietarily? It's just for the community's benefit, so they understand why some information would be shared with only us.
So the type of information that would be shared only with you would be information of a potential legal matter that the council would have to then deliberate on and decide, you know, is this something that we do or do not take further legal action on?
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. At the very latest, we will be taking this matter up further on the Thursday, August 4th city council meeting. With that, the next discussion item, downtown Pontiac cleanup activities and council support. Wanted to very briefly just announce that ahead of the Pontiac Arts Crawl, which is presented by the Pontiac Arts Commission, which is happening Friday, July 22nd, that Main Street Pontiac is joining with community members and downtown businesses to do a cleanup of that downtown, and so that's happening on Thursday, July 21st, and you can learn more at Main Street Pontiac. But just wanted to acknowledge that Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, who represents downtown in her District One boundaries, she has used some of her District One project funds to support the downtown Pontiac cleanup activities. So I want to give the floor to you to state your piece on that.
Thank you very much. I like, I believe communication is power, truth is power. The downtown has to be treated as a jewel, just like the whole South Side District One. I take pride in it, and one of my promises was, is to treat the whole District One equally. This is why cleaning up the downtown is so vital to the us as a community, because we want you to come down and say, hey, I've never seen that before, hey, I never knew this was happening. But most importantly, there is an amazing mural that's being painted, and I want us to understand the importance of it. This woman was one of the first African-American women to own property in the city of Pontiac, and so I'm trying to go out with the old attitude, the new attitude is that the downtown is for any and everybody, no matter what creed, color, economic base, or attitude, you are all welcome downtown. So that's why I want it cleaned up, so you can come and enjoy, and thank you so much.
Mayor Grimal.
I want to certainly thank Councilwoman Rutherford for her leadership and foresight in terms of providing funds to help with the cleanup. I've also instructed the DPW department to assist with the providing of garbage bags and tools and helping with garbage pickup after the fact, and so it's, this is truly a team effort that includes perhaps most importantly, everyday residents, downtown businesses, and Main Street Pontiac, together with both city council and the executive branch, all working together to make sure that our downtown sparkles in advance of Friday's art crawl.
Thank you for elevating that, Mayor. In the past, when I've been involved in downtown Pontiac event organizing, there was always this fear, because there would be Earth Day-related cleanups, and then the bags would sit on the curb for days, sometimes weeks, sometimes longer, deteriorating and looking terrible. So it kind of really undercut, undermines the cleanup efforts that volunteers and businesses are doing, especially when there's going to be so many eyeballs on the downtown, so many visitors. So I'm grateful that you've alerted your staff and the department leadership, so that way there can be a swift transition there, where those garbage bags and lawn refuse bags that are accumulated are taken away. So that way they don't have to linger in downtown and be a very underwhelming art installation during the art crawl. Other further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. The next discussion item is the current strategy for offering city-owned parcels available for sale. This is something that the council and the community and administration, it's come up in recent conversations, and the administration's been actively considering the most appropriate strategy, so that way the residents and the community overall are in the best position. So I want to give the floor to the administration for any updates they'd like to offer on the strategy they're pursuing going forward on that question. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, President McGinnis, and I'm going to, and shortly, give the floor to Deputy Mayor Stevens to get into some of the considerations that we've been talking about, but I do just want to note that we have started having those conversations about what this strategy may look like, and one important piece to that is, as council is aware, we created a new position called the Community Development Department Director, and that director will be responsible for three divisions, the building division, which has in the past been outsourced to Wade Trim, but that we're bringing in-house, and then the economic development division and the planning division. And certainly, the work of that community development department director is going to be very key, because he or she will oversee two divisions, both the planning division and the economic development division, that are very important as we look at how best to sell, or give away, or whatever the process is, these properties. But I know that we're looking at considerations including some sort of discounted sale, perhaps of a free giveaway of property to residential owners who have neighboring parcels. We're also looking at broader economic development strategies, particularly in terms of single-family house building and trying to transition existing renters into affordable homeownership. But without further ado, I'll give the floor to Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor suggested, we have a number of different potential uses for all of the vacant lots that are in the city, and so what we are doing is we're going through, looking at those potential uses, prioritizing the uses as to highest and best use to move the city forward, and then using that hierarchy to put together a, basically a stair step of how a parcel would be offered for disposition. So just to give you a preview of what we have, which is not set in stone, but coming, it is coming together very nicely, would be the idea of if there is a vacant parcel that would otherwise have held a home on it, the first priority would be for that parcel to have a home put on it once again. So it would be offered to the general public, for anyone who was interested in putting a home on it and turning into an agreement with the city, with a set timeframe to put a home on that property. If no one is interested in that, then that property would then become available to the adjacent property owner, because the next highest and best use would be for the adjacent property owner to then have a larger yard, making that property a more desirable property. And then, of course, the final, the final highest and best use of that property, other than it remaining in the hands of the city, would be for a neighborhood association to informally adopt that parcel and, you know, take care of it, maybe put a community garden or something on it. That is actually the sticking point that we're at right now, because the community garden is a great temporary use of space, and it keeps the parcel up-kept, but it is not the long-term highest and best use of the property. So just trying to figure out how to allow the property to freely move between a community garden-type space and then being eligible again for either the adjacent property owner or a prospective home builder.
Thank you. Discussion, Pro Tem Carrington, then Councilwoman Rutherford.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Just one question, and I have a statement as well. Have the city actually inventoried exactly, know exactly how much property you got, the city owns currently?
The short answer to that is no. The long answer to that is we have an inventory of property, we have not verified that inventory.
Okay, thank you. And just a statement, I definitely like the concept of you guys talking about, about those three particular directions you want to go. I prefer like one and two.
Yes.
And even though I manage a community garden on three parcels, that is a lot of work for any community organization to maintain, and if you look around the city of Pontiac, you see community gardens that are not being maintained by community organizations. So even though I'm a community organization that are invested in that particular way, I just want to make sure that we get the best use of those properties.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford, and then Mayor Grimal, then Councilwoman James.
Okay. So my first question is, what's the exact timeline when this is going to be implemented? Because I have several individuals in the community who have been taking care of property they do not own. There's also a list that Marion, I believe that's her name, that Caucasian woman has been keeping, that was done with the prior administration, that they seem to believe that because they've been signing up on it, they will be able to buy the parcel. So I want to make sure we are letting people know the exact date, the exact timeline, if it's three months, if it's two months, because what I don't want to happen is, and also, I don't want these people who have been signing that list thinking they have first dibs, that now all of a sudden we created a new system, and they've been taking care of this land for 10 years, and now they don't have the opportunity to buy the land. So that's my question, what's the timeline and what's going on with the list that Marion has? Because I didn't know who had it last week, but I remember who had it this week. Go ahead.
Mayor Grimal has next on the speaker's list, but he can throw it your way, too.
Well, I had my hand up, I'm going to defer to Deputy Mayor Stevens to answer the question posed by Councilwoman Rutherford in detail, but I did just want to give an even longer answer to Deputy Mayor Stevens' long answer about the inventory of properties, which is, we do have a list, as Deputy Mayor Stevens said, we haven't verified that list yet. We have started conversations with the county about assisting us with verifying that list, because of course, the County Register of Deeds has actual recorded title documents for properties throughout the county, including here in Pontiac, and there is, there are a couple of software programs that help track and inventory properties, and the county uses one of those. So we've started having conversations with the county about, you know, would it be possible for us to possibly go in with the county in terms of- for us to possibly go in with the county in terms of licensing the use of this software for the city? So we are working on trying to get a better handle on that. One thing's pretty clear, the city has not had any systematic approach to tracking and managing and just keeping an accurate list of its properties for many, many, many years. And obviously, it's essential for any owner of anything to keep track of their property. And so we take that seriously and are working on making sure we're addressing it. In terms of the expectations of property owners, you know, as Deputy Mayor Stevens already alluded to, we value the work that residents have put in in terms of maintaining neighboring properties. Obviously, we can't take responsibility for whatever representations were made in the past by whoever, two individuals, or whatever their expectations might be. But we recognize that a lot of residents have put in a lot of hard work to maintain some neighboring parcels, and certainly we're sensitive to that. And that's, I think, why Deputy Mayor Stevens indicated that there'll be some component to the policy that recognizes that there's a way to convey properties to those who are neighboring those parcels and/or who have been taking care of those parcels. And without that, I'll give the floor to Deputy Mayor Stevens to provide any additional details he thinks makes sense.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal. Councilwoman Rutherford, to your question of timeline, it is our hope, so nothing will go into effect without it first coming in front of City Council, not because City Council needs to vote on it, that that's not how this works, but it doesn't make sense for us to institute a policy of disposition of property that the council has not already said that they agree with, because at the end of the day, no city property can be conveyed without a vote of council. So if council is not in agreeance with the policy that we put in place, and we bring a property to the council and say, we would like to convey this parcel, the council is going to say, well, what about this, what about this, what about this, what about this? And it's just going to delay the process. So your question, as far as timeline, we hope to have that in front of that document in front of council for you to say, yes, we agree with the concept that you've put in place. We hope to have that to you in the next couple of weeks, but we won't go live with it until we have gotten, you know, implicit buy-in from the majority of council.
Thank you.
Councilwoman James, Councilwoman Parker.
Yes, I have two comments. The first one is that I would, I would hope that when you get your full proposal ready, and it certainly does look like it's headed in the right direction, I would like to see you get some community input for it, however you want to go about that, maybe taking it out to the various community councils. But I think something like this has the potential of really, you know, getting the attention of many homeowners in the city, and it would be good if we, you know, just went out and got some feedback about, you know, once you get your plan in place, let's get some community feedback on it and then come back to the drawing board and refine it a little bit. That's just a suggestion. The second thing is, in regards to the number one item you're offered to build, that that's your number one concern for these, for these lots. My concern is that a lot of these lots are head homes on them at one time, but those sizes, the sizes of those homes are no, no longer meet the current criteria. In other words, you've got a small lot there and you would like for a house to be built on it, but that, that house, there's, the house would not fit that lot under the current criteria. So unless the city is willing to make some, some adjustments there in terms of what can be built, you know, because we've got a phenomena now in the world of the tiny homes and the tiny trailers and whatever else, I think it certainly is, it would be appropriate for us to make some adjustments there so that if someone who wants to build a smaller home would be able to buy one of these smaller lots and be able to get an exception or whatever, have we thought about something like that? Because I know that there are a lot of these properties that are not going to meet the current bill criteria for, for a new home.
Councilwoman Parker's next, and then Mayor Grimal, unless you're yielding your time, Councilwoman James, for that answer.
If you had an answer, yes, I would yield my time.
Mayor Grimal, you've been yielded to.
Yeah, so your point's a really excellent point, and we have had some discussions about, you know, there are lots of different terms for this, but basically for allowing some exceptions to the minimum square footage size of houses that currently exists in city ordinance. So, you know, a lot of people, especially young people, aren't looking for as big a houses as once upon a time people looked at. And of course, as you know, some of the lot sizes are challenging to build on without smaller footprints of the home. So the short answer is yes, we are looking at it and will continue to do so.
Councilwoman Parker, and then Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you, sir. I just had probably one question, and as I was sitting there listening to the discussion, I recall that the previous administration would periodically give reports on houses that was torn down by blight removal, using the CBDG funds. So can we assume that then that property was owned by the city? And can we match that list up with the existing list that you have to figure out what the city owns?
Do you yield to Deputy Mayor Stevens?
You have your time. Yes.
He yielded. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker. The answer to that question is actually no. We cannot assume that if we demolished a house, that that property is owned by the city. A logical assumption is that the former owner of that property has, air quotes, abandoned the property, which means that they are no longer keeping up the property, which is why we ended up demolishing it. And if they're no longer keeping up the property, one would make the logical assumption that they are also no longer paying the taxes on the property, which means that that property will go into tax foreclosure. And then through tax foreclosure, if, if the city did not pick it up as a right of first refusal, if it did not sell at one of the two property auctions that the county has, then that property would actually become in the ownership of Oakland County. But we cannot assume that if the city demolished a building, that the city now owns that property.
Councilman Nicholson.
I have two residents that would, you know, be very interested in the concept of, I know, first build, second, potentially the next-door neighbor. They are the next-door neighbor. They either have a home or a second home a family member lives in, and it's, they're very small. I'm thinking about more of like the Milldam neighborhood. There is, where the houses are quite small and they're, the lots are also quite small. They're interested in expanding those, those homes. Would that count as, or I'm hoping to put in a good word, because I don't know, I know you're working on this and you don't have the answers, that if somebody's interested in that, that still counts as number one priority as building, is that the home would be of greater value or, you know, potentially, you know, more residence? I'd yield to Deputy Mayor.
You have the floor.
Thank you. So that actually is part of the whole, so the answer is yes. And where we're trying to work out, you know, what is, what exactly is build? Does it only mean construct a whole new home? Does it mean construct an addition? Does it mean construct a garage? Do we have a nuance where construct a home is of higher value than construct a garage? So trying to make that waterfall work.
Yeah. I, the reason, I apologize. The reason for me is that many people live in very small houses around, in that neighborhood particularly, and they're interested in staying there, wanting to have a larger, nicer home. But the idea of putting an investment in when they're sitting next to a blight property or an abandoned property is difficult, right? So the idea that they may actually rebuild a nicer, more appealing house if they had an appropriate-sized lot, that I think that that would, would be fantastic.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
When y'all roll this out, my only request is that you at least give a fair shake to the ones that's been taking care of it. I promise you, if we don't, it's going to come back to bite us, because I can name 20 people right now who've been taking care of properties that we own for over 10-plus years, and it's a disservice to not give them the opportunity to buy. So when y'all do it, please do, because I don't want residents to feel like they being shuck and jabbing these outdoor, the rumors always that outside entities come in and buy these parcels, and the people that's been taking care of the land don't receive the fruits of the labor. So I say that as a comment, not as a jab, it's a difference, okay? Did you get it? I knew that you could. Thank you.
Other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we move now to the final discussion item, Galloway Lake Park easement concerns. Want to give the floor first to Councilwoman James, who brought this item for context?
Yes, this is an issue that came up a couple of weeks ago when we had the presentation from the WRC, and they talked about the work that was being done. And we had previously, Pastor Parker and myself are part of the development group, the community-led development of Galloway Lake Park. We're looking to design and to actually come up with a plan for developing that park. And as part of that, we found out that about the work that was being done, the sewer work that was being done, and so questions were asked, there were questions asked when the WRC was here. And as a result of that, the mayor provided some, some additional information for that this week, giving us the detail of what was, is being done. And it is as a result of an easement that the WRC has that was signed by the previous mayor, Dr. Waterman, and it is a very extensive piece of, piece of work. And my concern is that it will compromise our ability to develop that park. We definitely will not have the freedom that we would like to have in terms of what we want to do in that park, because once you get these underground structures, you know, in place, the sewage lines in place, you have to be able to keep that, you know, you can't put structures on top of, you can't put a playscape on top of sewer lines because those lines are going to have to be maintained. So it has really created an extreme concern on my part of how this got done, you know, the scrutiny that did not go into what we, what we've, what we've done, to be able to give this kind of an easement in a community park, which is one of our larger parks. It's just incredible to me, but we, I'm opening it up as a discussion. My concern is that we're not, we've not been able to indicate that this particular easement that, again, was signed by the mayor was ever approved by the council. So I think there are some extenuating questions that we need to ask and get some answers to. So I want to open it up as a discussion item, the ramifications really, to the city of having this work done at Galloway Park.
Mayor Grimal, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Rutherford.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And I share Councilwoman James's concerns as she notes, the previous mayor, Dr. Waterman, signed some easement documents that purported on behalf of the city to give easement rights to the Water Resources Commission in the Galloway Lake Park property. And there are, we've, we've learned this week, just yesterday, that there are really four easements. Two are temporary easements for the purposes solely of conducting construction. So those are of lesser concern, obviously, because those are not permanently encumbering any property in the park. But the other two easements are permanent easements, and although my understanding so far is that the infrastructure would be underground, so the actual installations being put in the ground as a result of those easements would not be visible to the public, the concern is that the Water Resources Commission would have to be able to periodically service or maintain those underground pipes. And that would limit, severely limit, obviously, the ability of the city to put any infrastructure on top of those pipes, that is to say, within the surface of those easements. The easements, I want to say, are about 20 feet wide. Don't quote me on that, but I believe that's the width of these easements. And, you know, any kind of, of building, in particular, if we, if the city tried to put it on these easements, A, it might be illegal for us to do so under the terms of the easement, but also if we were to do so, there's a risk that if the Water Resources Commission needed to access the pipe at that particular point, would have the right to destroy some or all of that building in order to access the underground pipe. So there are a couple of questions that this all raises. One is, did the previous mayor have the legal authority without coming to council for a vote to sign the easements? I don't know the answer to that question offhand, but we're looking into that. And the second question is, you know, one of the things that the Water Resources Commission seemed to indicate is that the installation of some of this pipe infrastructure underground would mean that they would no longer need to use certain other existing pipe infrastructure that's already in the ground. So one question is, would they be willing to give up easement rights that they already have in other spaces in the park? And of course, the overarching question here is, what are our longer-term plans for the park and to what extent do any of these easements interfere with those plans as we conceive of them today? There is a study that's been launched, or is about to be launched, to do long-term planning for the park, and that was made possible by Councilwoman James's leadership, even before she got on council, through the friends of Pontiac Parks. And so thank you, Councilwoman James, for your leadership in securing that funding to do some long-term planning in Galloway Lake Park. But this is concerning, and we really do need to do a deep dive on this. The Water Resources Commission, based on the construction schedule that they shared with us, has not yet started digging in the ground, as best as I can determine, and, but they're scheduled to begin digging in the ground next month in August. So we need to figure this out, and we need to figure it out in short order.
Councilman Parker, and then Councilwoman Rutherford.
Thank you, brother president. Well, I was out at the park and I've seen them digging already, so I know they're doing some digging out there. And this agreement, as I've looked at it, I mean, it's so much doublespeak, you'd have to be a Perry Mason or Matlock to be able to figure it out. It's so convoluted. It's, it's like, just to share what I read, "The grant agrees not to build or convey other permissions to build any permanent structures on the above-described permanent easement." That says you can't, but are not limited to fixtures, structures with footings, culverts, dams, bridges, and any, and any structure of a similar nature. It's supposed to replace, preserve, and protect the trees and the shrubbery, except when it doesn't have to protect the trees and the shrubbery. This thing, it doesn't make logical sense. I hate, I truly don't even believe whether anybody really read it and fully understood it before somebody signed it, because what it really does for us, at least from my perspective, is it makes a lot of dead land in a park that we were planning on using. And I have to ask myself, based on all the discussions that I've heard and what I've read, is that really why this park was not really considered when we were talking about a youth park? Because somebody had to know that this was taking place, and that's why they probably held off on it. The other part of that is, this park also will lead into some construction on Bay Street, which nobody, nobody mentions, and that's now going to be tied up. And so there's a whole bunch of this stuff that's coming together, and we're just not hearing about it, at least this council and this administration just not hearing about it. And that just seems to me to be a whole, well, I'm going to leave it there. It just seemed like it wasn't well thought out, wasn't well planned. Nobody had the gumption to say, this is what we want to do, this is what we're going to create, this is how this is going to damage that park permanently, and now somebody is saying, you don't have a right to say, you can't, I can't do it.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
And that to me, I'm sorry, and that to me is atrocious. We have a 28-acre park. We have a 28-acre park that has potential, and right at this point, if we allow this to continue, it will become just about useless.
How many acres was that?
Twenty-eight. I thought it was 28, but it could be larger than that. Plus, this also affects, I believe, the North Spur.
Well...
Thank you, Councilwoman Rutherford.
Oh, I'm not gonna leave it there. My first thing is, was this legally done, and if so, can it be stopped? Because if the council didn't vote on this, did they vote on this, you could not find it? So that means it wasn't voted on by the council. So can this be helped? Do they have a way for this to be disregarded? Because if the council didn't vote on it, she didn't have jurisdiction to enter into it. And then the part two of my concern is this. How many more of these oops, I'm sorry, events are we gonna have? Because this is in District, what is it, your district?
Five.
Yeah, five. I would hate, you know, for it to happen in District One, because I'm gonna have a major problem. So is there a way for you to go through the files and all the stuff that she didn't take from here, and figure out what other contracts that we don't know we're in? Because this is looking like it's gonna be a major issue. And I don't want it to be, oh, it's cool, it's not, because that's a major part, and like, I want to concur with what Pastor Parker said, excuse me, sir. We were gonna vote on this, if we had voted on this, we still wouldn't have been able to do the skate park, because it wouldn't be able for us to use the land. So my question to the administration, how many more of these are available, situations like this, and how do we make sure this doesn't happen again?
Mayor Grimald, you have the floor.
Well, it, it won't happen again, meaning, starting on January 1st of this year, moving forward, because it's not something that I would ever, in my wildest dreams, execute without bringing to council, even if I legally could. So, again, this happened last year, under a previous mayor, and I think what you're asking, though, is, how do we do an assessment or inventory of any other things like this that the previous mayor may have done, so that we can get a handle on that question without there being future surprises that we have not yet discovered? And, you know, I think there are a couple of possible ways that we can try to get at that. I mean, you know, in, in this context, in terms of any conveyance of property, any encumbrances of property through easements, for example, or things of that nature, we can do a, you know, we want to be sensitive to cost a little bit, but we could do some sort of title search with the Register of Deeds, you know, over the course of the past period of time, however far back we want to go. So there are some things we could do, but, you know, there's, if something's not recorded at the county, there may not be a foolproof way to ensure that somebody doesn't come out of the woodwork at some point in time, waiving a signed contract that the previous mayor or somebody else signed. So there may not be a completely foolproof way to ensure that we don't discover trickle by trickle various things that the previous administration may have done that were not made public at the time. In terms of whether this was legal, like I said, we're looking into that. The, the city charter requires any sale or disposition of property to come before council. This is not, at first blush, a sale or disposition exactly of property itself, in that it is an encumbrance of property, but it is a disposition of certain property rights. So it's maybe a little bit of a gray area in terms of whether the charter requires this to have come before council last year, when the previous mayor executed this. So we're looking into it, and stay tuned.
Councilman Parker, and then Councilwoman James.
Thank you, sir. I just want to make, because I was sitting here, again, reading this, and I just read this piece, for, and in consideration of the sum of $1, receipt of which is hereby acknowledged to be paid to them by the County of Oakland, Michigan, so it seems to me it was sold for $1. That's what I read. Maybe I didn't read it right, but that's what it says on this sheet, for the sum of $1, that the easement rights were sold to the county. That's what the paper says, so.
Perry Mason Parker.
Again.
I'm sorry. Perry Mason Parker. You made that old-school reference, I thought would get more mileage out of him.
Again, I just, I, I don't, you know, I don't normally get upset, but this upset me, because we've been, Pastor, Councilwoman James and myself have been planning and processing, and she's been raising money, and even Ms. Bornghess has been out there looking to make this into a beautiful park, and I will, basically what we're saying is, somebody is saying, you don't have the right, the ownership, to do anything in that park, because of what we already have planned on doing in the park. And so, the work that has gone forth is pretty much null and void, and it just, I'm sure everybody who's put that work in, and not blaming this administration, because we didn't have anything to do with it, but again, we found out about it at the 11th hour, and trying to undo it is going to be difficult now, because, as I said, they're already digging, because I see them dig. So at this point, where do we go from here?
Councilwoman James.
Yeah, that, that is my concern. I certainly very much want to know, you know, we have attorneys, and let's put our city attorneys to work, because I definitely want to know what our legal options are here, you know. You know, we, we just need to know what we're dealing with, what we can and, and can't do going forward.
Any further discussion on this item? So obviously, this will be pursued further.
Yes.
With that, discussion items concluded. We are now at recognition of elected officials. I see we have a charter revision commissioner, the Honorable Kermit Williams, in our midst. Welcome, sir. And we have a Pontiac Library Board trustee, H. Bill Maxey. Would any elected officials present like to be recognized this evening? All right. With that, we are now at agenda address. President Pro Tem Carrington.
Oh, yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Ms. Gloria Miller, agenda address, and could you please tell me what item on the agenda you're speaking about? Okay, thank you.
But actually, when you just talked about Galloway, that drove me for all of them. Let me tell, I'm, I'm talking to the citizens, because when I come here, I talk to the citizens, because they bring me back down here. I'd known for some time it's something wrong with Galloway, because I did a project when I first got on council, draw it up, to have swing sets and everything, and it'd been sold. And I'm gonna say this to the citizens. The mayor didn't do all this by herself, okay? She didn't do this, somebody, some, some attorney told her what to do and how to get a pass that, somebody. And you brought up the question about the forensic audit. That's their job. We don't have to look, that's why they're here, right? That's why we paying money for them, right? They should find all the discrepancy in this city. I sat up there for four years, and I kept seeing, and we kept arguing with this mayor. We knew things, but we couldn't tell you everything. Now you seeing what we're talking about. It's a whole lot of stuff done wrong, honey. I know, I know the books. And so, for the mayor to sit there and say, you guys should be getting a lot of stuff coming from the forensic audit, because somebody should be going to jail. I'm just gonna call it like it is. This is my people. I live here. That's where my passion come from, from my people. They keep calling me, go down and speak. You're gonna find a lot of stuff that was done in that last administration, and she didn't do it by herself. Now, the last thing I want to mention, I want to mention about, about the cleanup. I'm gonna keep pushing this, because I'm a cleanup fanatic. How, you're gonna clean up down Pontiac, and you don't have the cleanup of the city done, the main thoroughfare of the city? It is going to hurt somebody. Almost seems like somebody got an accident, some of these thoroughfares I've been telling the mayor about. Somebody's gonna get hurt, you're gonna read it in the paper, I'm gonna be the first one to come down and say, I told you so. We gotta clean our own, you gotta clean up your neighborhoods first. Nobody, everybody that comes into the city, get elected, want to go downtown, but nobody want to go into a neighborhood.
Thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark, what agenda item you are addressing today? I'm sorry? Financial?
On the 14th, July 14th, financial?
July 14th.
Yes, yes. Pardon me? No. No, I was not. First, I got a question for council, and for the mayor, and the deputy mayor, and to Attorney Sharp. The question is, when the council is set here in awe, or confusion, or not knowing what directions to go in, where do you step in? Because you were on the last team for the last council, and the mayor to give instructions and advice. Where is it that you step in to help, to assist, to get clarity, opposed to keeping confusion with the, the people that's listening? That's the number one. On the 14th of, of this month, I got a call from one of the senior citizens who's in District One. She was concerned about Ms. Rutherford donating money for, to help with a field trip. That's finances, that's the best I can, you know?
Excuse me, that, that's not on that particular minutes? Now, you can discuss this in public comment, that's no problem.
And I understand, but I didn't know, when it says finances, I...
No. You have to address agenda, you have to address an item that's part of the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Mr. Larry Jasper, what particular agenda item?
We're gonna be discussing about the forensic audit, audit?
Yes, sir.
And the park. Just, Mrs. Rutherford asked a question, what you can do. You can put emergency stop on what they're doing right now, the attorney should be able to file that, the lawsuit against the individuals, because you think you have an illegal document. The judge will review that, and then take it from there, but the city attorney should be able to do it immediately, like tomorrow. As far as the park's concerned, those documents could have been regulated from the GSA, for that matter. There's private stakeholders, we don't know what they did. According to Waterman, who I spoke to last week, she said, oh, well, they had two years to decide what they wanted to do. This was done in closed-door sessions with a private entity, because the public stakeholders, which are the elected officials to represent, did not disclose the information to the public, because it was caught in a legal contract, which gives a loophole confidentiality, when in fact, those things were bypassed. And that's why you're reading this document right now, it's been designed to make sure that nobody could stop it. It's your job to stop it, to support the people, those constituents which elected you to office. And as far as you want the documents, it's very simple, go back to the city attorneys, they drafted every document the ex-mayor signed, every document. They have a file on everything, I guarantee it, and if they don't keep a file, you have to disbar them. Certainly have to get rid of them, because by law, that's what they have to do. It's that simple. When you want to do Sidwell numbers, and you want to get contracts, not a problem. Just go ahead and get them. The city should be providing the council a list of all the properties with a map, and it doesn't take all day. We run a surplus of $6.2 million, supposedly, the mayor says, we have money to go ahead and afford an outside group to go ahead and make that happen, and next week. It takes less than seven days. Just so you know, the global settlement is run by two controlling documents. Agreement to sale and purchase, which has a second contract, and a parking lease agreement, which forces the city to do things for themselves, not the public.
Thank you, Mr. Jasper. President McGinnis, that concludes our agenda address.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution establishing the approach for commemoration and naming of city facilities and properties?
I'm gonna move. Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford, so that item is before us. Want to read it for the community's benefit. Whereas, the Pontiac City Council is tasked with the authority and responsibility to determine whether a City of Pontiac facility, property, or asset be named or renamed. And whereas, from time to time, the Pontiac City Council may wish to commemorate a city facility, street, or other asset by means of a plaque naming the facility after a person or some other honor. And whereas, a city facility, street, or other asset may have the name permanently changed, or an honorary designation may be established that would be an additional identifiable, identifiable moniker for the property. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council hereby reiterates that all naming decisions shall be determined by a majority vote of the city council, following review and deliberation by the city council. And further resolved, the city council establishes that such commemoration should be reserved only for those individuals or entities who have made a significant contribution to the enhancement of the City of Pontiac, or to the well-being of our neighborhoods, state, or nation. And further resolved, the city council further establishes that the honor of naming a city facility or property after an individual be reserved for individuals who are deceased. And further resolved, the city council may sell the right to name particular facilities owned by the city, but shall establish a process and criteria that would be adopted by the city council prior to considering or approving any such decision on the rights to naming any facilities. So that's what's before us. It's really just sort of establishing the, the approach that we want to identify moving forward, and the two main X-factors are, one, does the city want to make the, the sort of strategy that we will reserve this honor for those who are no longer with us, those that have deceased? That is an option that we may or may not include. And then the second, and this was sparked in part because the school district has this policy, you know, in terms of naming schools, or gymnasium, or a pool, or something like that, where they've, they've kind of have a criteria in place. So we're not trying to overcomplicate it, we want to set some, some generally understood ground rules. And then this final item, I can't foresee a scenario that would happen, but it just makes it clear that there may be a scenario where we'd want to, you know, name the Phoenix Center, the PNC Bank Phoenix Center, and to do that, we would first, before we'd even consider that thing, we would come up with a policy and approach, but that's kind of a new can of worms, that would kind of be a separate process or policy. So that's what we have before us. We can even strike that if we don't ever want to go in that direction, it's kind of just leaving a, a sort of a tangent there if we want to in the future. I, I have no objections to us striking that, but I wanted to put that out there, since if that would be something we want to consider in the future, we should at least begin the concept of where we want to, want to go. Councilman Nicholson, I saw your hand.
I appreciate the posthumous designation, mostly because we can't know for sure the entirety of somebody's life and achievements until it is, until it's over, right? I mean, we could only imagine naming something, and then three years later, they're involved in some sort of scandal, or murder, or something that, you know, we're like, oh, no, what did we do? And I think that it's important to honor somebody's life in entirety, so I think, you know, not saying that anybody who's had those situations doesn't, you know, there could be somebody that does deserve that honor, but I think being able to review somebody's life, achievements, accomplishments in their entirety is very important.
Councilwoman Rutherford, and Pro Tem Carrington.
So I think this is important, because Pontiac is the place where we root for the underdog, and most, especially on the South Side, there are people who have had holes and moments in their lives that was questionable, and they rose from the ashes and they became successful. You know, I could think about the boxer named Mr. Pinkerton, how he went through his own life struggles, and then at the end of the day, not only did he reinvent himself, but he came across as a fighter. So I think this is important. And also, there are people here who have given their lives to the City of Pontiac, and done things that changed the game, and it's just time that they get recognized. Whether you like them as human beings is, is not about it, it's about the totality of that individual. So I am so excited for this actually to be going on, and I thank you for putting this before the council, that's all.
Were you referencing Pinklin Thomas?
Mm-hmm.
And this would not have any bearing on those parks, or streets, or anything else that's already been named, and the person is still with us, that, that previous decision or honor would, would still stand, we don't seek to reverse that? Pro Tem Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Actually, I love both resolves. I think it removes some of the politics of what's currently happened in the past, and it kind of put everybody on a neutral playing field. Also, considering naming rights of facilities when it comes to corporations, many cities actually do that based on financial, for example, Detroit, you know, all the stadiums is usually named after a corporation. So as a small city like the City of Pontiac, those funds can definitely be, be beneficial to the community, so I definitely support this resolution.
And it's worth pointing out that some other municipalities and, you know, public entities, including school districts, when they have those sort of naming rights policies, it's very specific. It'll say what type of company that we will not consider, you know, something that dangers the health and well-being of residents, or things of that sort, so we're not gonna have Pall Mall, Cigarette Avenue, or something like that. But that would be something we would pursue in the future, we could spell it out with specific scenarios, and there could be very tailored programs, too, if it's, you know, to a specific opportunity. Did you have a hand, Mayor?
No.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else that wish to speak to the motion before us? So it's the resolution establishing the approach for commemoration and naming of city facilities and property. And so this establishes a baseline approach that we will employ, and we can refine it further as we go forward. Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Can I just ask, what policy or what ordinance would this be attached to, you know, in terms of giving the more specific direction? Or is this itself would be binding?
It would be binding only on the commitment that we are making collectively as a body. So we're sort of by resolution establishing that this is communicating it externally and also internally that this is the approach we want to take, but it is not setting it into ordinance. It would probably most impact the ordinances that deal with the purchase of property, the owning of city property and streets, but I have not lately reviewed ordinances that speak to the naming of things. I think it's pretty, just kind of default assumes that those decisions are made by city council. I'd have to research to see if there's one that spells it out and what its specific numbers.
The reason why I said that is because this is one, you know, we do a lot of resolutions, but this is one that our residents might want to use if they have a person that they would like to recommend and say, hey, I think we should name a street after this person. This is one of those resolutions that would be, you know, applicable, that they would need to know what the council has agreed to do. So that was, you know, my concern, that this doesn't just get filed away, but how do we make sure that this becomes what, you know, what we, this is our guideline now for naming for commemorating and naming city facilities after individuals.
It's setting the standard and that we want to hold ourselves to. So when, if and when there's decisions that come before us, we can keep this with it, you know, sort of like it could be supplemental information as a framework. And also, this resolution is before us in part because there have been active requests that have come in.
I know.
And we want to be able to give a concrete answer versus we'll see. And so my short-term plan is to be providing that in response, you know, to elaborating further on what the next steps are. It would be providing this as a frame of reference to those that are inquiring.
Okay.
But your point is very well made, and I'll do some review of ordinances to see if it makes sense in the future if we like this approach and, you know, so once we're sort of doing the practical application of it, of if we want to give it more teeth or we want to work on it further. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Rutherford?
Can you call for the vote, please?
If there's no more discussion, the vote will happen. No more discussion? Councilwoman Rutherford's wish has been granted. We now move into voting on adoption of the council resolution establishing our approach for commemoration and naming of city facilities and property. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion? And Planning Master Gustafson, you can start making your way to the PowerPoint so you can pull up the goods there. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve zoning map amendment, ZMA 226, at lots four and five of parcels 6414, 19426, 013, and parcel 6414, 19426, 003, from C3 corridor commercial to M1 light manufacturing zoning district to only allow medical marijuana grow and processing use?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilwoman James.
Goodman?
Goodman.
Oh, I'm sorry. My eyes just keep looking and there's the syllables. All right, I'll get it right. Councilman Goodman moved, Councilwoman James seconded. That item is now before us, and we give the floor now to the administration and Mr. Gustafson to launch into the details.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I yield to Mr. Gustafson.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President and City Council. In talking with IT this morning, they said that they uploaded onto this...
They did, I'll help you out.
First, before I get into this, I would like to just get back to Galloway Lake. Aside from all of the comments that were made, we should also be potentially cognizant of the fact that we are, obviously, as the plan talked about, the conversion of 28 acres that we need to locate. By putting this into an easement, how would that affect our conversion, meaning that we might have to owe because of that easement laying over the property? Because there is when, when my understanding is, is when they built that facility closer to Ewald Center, that became, that easement to a property became part of WRC. So I guess the question's going to be if that's going to impact us also. I had a brief conversation with Kristen Wolfang about this, and so we were, we were kind of trying to do a deep dive. So I'm just, I wanted to put that also, not to create more questions for us, but something that we need to resolve or get resolved. Okay? Okay. So what you have in front of you is a presentation in regards to, from an applicant, BYOP Properties, Caesar Chavez, to amend it as what was discussed in regards to rezoning from C3 corridor commercial to M1 light manufacturing. Next slide.
See if it works. It works.
Interesting, okay. So this graphic does, does a very good job in regards to, the area in blue represents, as everybody well knows, is the Caesar Chavez Medical Marijuana Overlay District. The site that is in question is located within that overlay district. So by right, they are able to grow all of the grow processing provisioning centers, safety compliance, secure transport within that. The question becomes then regards to that parcel in regards, it's zoned incorrectly for a grow and processing. So by right, so we didn't do a conditional zoning. If you remember correctly, the one on West Lawrence was conditional because it was located outside of one of the, one of the three districts. So here we have it included. They are looking to do a grow and processing in regards, as we know, as a grower cultivates and trims and basically grows the plants and sells it and transports it over to a processor. Processor is going to take it, extract certain resins from that, and make other products from that. Next slide. Here is a slight aerial, probably not the greatest image, but it does outline, it's on Caesar Chavez on the southeast corner of Caesar East Chavez and Kenny Road. It's a vacant piece of property or a number of parcels that make up this parcel that is in question for rezoning, or portion of it. Next slide, please. Thank you. Here are some images of eastbound and westbound along Caesar Chavez. Again, vacant primarily or all vacant with some growth along the edges of the property. Next slide.
You don't mean marijuana growth, you mean foliage growth?
Foliage, yes. Well, there could be underneath, but that's another story. Here gives you an indication regarding current zoning. As you can see, the site, the, a portion of the parcel is zoned C3. The rear portion, which I can show you in a better slide next, is zoned R1. And then across the street, obviously, with the type of uses that are going on along Caesar Chavez, all of that gray area represents M1 light manufacturing zoning district. Next slide. So here we have, there is actually two parcels that make up what is part of this project, smaller site and also the larger parcel. So the next slide, I think, will be helpful the most. So currently, the way the site's working regards to zoning, so we have C3 closer to Caesar Chavez. On the north or westerly portion of the site is zoned R1. So what is planned for the site is that the facility itself, the building where they'll grow and processing, will be located on the area that is currently zoned C3 and requesting those lots and parcels to be zoned M1, M1 light manufacturing. The R1 district does not need to be rezoned. In our zoning ordinance, it allows for commercial or non, what they call non-residential parking to be located in that M1 district. So we don't need to rezone that to an M1 classification, which is a good thing. So we were smart enough in regards, in understanding the limitations in regards to number of commercial properties along these corridors. We said there could be potential in regards of some non-residential parking to be located in these areas, and we'll allow that as, by right, to do that. Next slide.
Councilman Goodman has a clarifying question.
Sure.
So when you, so repeat that again. When it comes to parking, you said the parking is allowed to be built on M1, or did you mean R1 in this case?
R1.
Thank you. That was all.
Next slide.
Yes, please.
All right.
So this one here is, is the site. If you look at the site, it says lot four and lot five. That represents the parent parcel that would be rezoned to M1. And then adjacent to, to it, that small sliver of a site would also be zoned M1 to light manufacturing. Talking about the suitability in regards to, obviously, we understand that M1 district is really set up to be for small to moderate types of size industrial uses, particularly in regards of this particular case, we're looking at a proposed use of a grow and processing has pretty limited, limited amount of employees. Obviously, it's a pretty, it's state licensed, it meets, has to meet all of those requirements, plus also the requirements of our, the clerk, city clerk's licensing requirements. They have not submitted, as far as I know, they have not submitted their application for that licensing. So that would be thoroughly reviewed and vetted through the clerk's office and along with supporting team members for that. And it would allow that use to, beyond that, going into that M1 light manufacturing district. Next slide. So here is the proposed zoning classification for the M1 district. Again, just on the south side of the parcel, say half of it, south half of it, and the other northern part would be R1. In our discussion with the planning commission, and that planning commission on July 6th had the opportunity, held the public hearing. There was no public comment at the, at that meeting. And also, it was also discussed previously in regards to the overall site, which I, site plan, the general makeup of the site, and I can show you that in a second here. But it was just a matter of looking at in regards to how this site would work out functionally in regards to the overall site and where this zoning classification would be located. Next slide. So here is an example in regards to, or the overall site plan that was submitted as part of the application. So here, if you look at the bottom portion of the graphic, kind of in the lower left-hand corner, is Caesar Chavez, that building that is being proposed. You can more see, clearly see on the black and white, that block, that dark outlined block represents the building. That shaded area on that R1 single family or one-family zoning district, that's where the parking would be located. Okay? Next slide. As part of our review, we do review buffer distances. It did comply with all the proposed distance requirements as relates to distance from public or private schools, that, and also commercial childcare facilities, public parks with playground equipment, and also religious institutions. They met all of those requirements. And also, on the next slide, you will see a series of zoning criteria that we also, previous rezoning applications that come before you. It is required of us and also to understand from you in regards to these requirements, and they did comply. All 10 of the, excuse me, all seven of the requirements, they did meet. That being consistency with the goals and policies as of our master plan, compatibility with the site's features, natural features, environmental features, also compatible in regards to uses that are allowed within that zoning district, knowing the fact of the character of Caesar Chavez, both on the same side of Caesar Chavez and definitely across the street. The next slide. Capacity in regards to, we examine utilities and services that are adequate for this proposed use. Looking at the street system, obviously Caesar Chavez being under the jurisdiction of MDOT and the capacity that can hold and will not disturb or provide any impacts or congestion in our road system. Also, looking at the use as a grow processing, you're not talking about a lot of employees working at that facility. Also, looking at the boundaries in regards to that district and also that proposed zoning district, really does comply pretty well in regards to what existing, their existing sites and dimensions of that parcel, and it does allow to meet these certain setbacks and other dimensional requirements of that M1 district. And lastly, this rezoning does not really create any isolated or spot zone is what we call it in that district, knowing the fact of the adjacent or the M1's existing zoning districts that are located on the opposite side of Caesar Chavez. Next slide. And that concludes an overview and be more happy answering questions.
Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I guess my concern is, I definitely don't like to set bad precedents, and I know that we already approved of one of these on this council as well, the last council also approved some as well. I guess my concern is, is that the last applicant actually went way beyond what was required, meaning that he actually went into the community, they actually talked to residents, and you just said no one showed up for public comment. So what was the, was the notice just posted, or did you actually send notices to the whole street behind that particular?
No, it was properly noticed in the paper, and also, we are required to mail out notices to all property owners within a radius of three, and sometimes we actually do 500 feet.
So...
They were. It was, for the July 6th meeting, that did occur.
And secondly, my other concern is definitely concerning the neighbors actually being able to get some kind of feedback. And even though, you know, you know, I've been to public comment because I kind of, I stay abreast of some of the things at the planning commission. But a lot of times, our neighbors are not really looking at that sheet or letter that comes in the mail.
Yeah.
And I know people like to say, oh, it's their fault.
Well, yeah, it's a postcard, so, yeah, I can see, it could get lost, yes.
So, so this, this particular company, BO, is it BYOP Properties Caesar Chavez LLC, have they had, have they had any experience in actually in any other cities, particularly running a growth center?
I believe so. I, to be clear, this is a project that my...
It's okay to say no.
Well, I...
If you don't know, it's okay to say no.
Yeah, I don't know, because my, actually Donovan Smith has been more working with this client more so than I have.
All right. No other questions?
Councilman Nicholson?
The R1 designation, I've, I've really only seen that where there has been or there's intended to be multi-unit. Was there multi-unit in this, this space?
Existing?
No, previously. Are you aware?
Not that I know of, no.
Yeah. I'm curious, just because the reflexive nature of R1, where it can either be a residential house or a parking lot, is bizarre to me. So that's why I'm trying to understand and wrap my head around.
Okay.
How we could go from, I mean, if I bought this, the property next door, and I am next to what makes me feel comfortable is a residential lot, and now there's going to be a parking lot, that feels like it devalues my property or, you know, I didn't, I didn't intend to live next to a parking lot. If it was a multi-tenant structure and there was already an existing parking lot, I've looked at Google pictures and it looks like there was some concrete that was involved on, there's grass, but there may have been concrete there.
Okay.
One thing that I suggested and have suggested in the past with rezoning, I really like the way that Rochester, Rochester Hills does their rezoning. They have these sandwich... They have these sandwich boards that, that whenever somebody is looking for rezoning, the sandwich board's required to be put out in public view, where it says, this, this, you know...
Proposed.
Yes, there's proposed rezoning that's happening on this property, please see this website for more information, or, you know, and it has, or it has the phone number, something like that, that way. Somebody who's passing by, somebody who doesn't, you know, I mean, I get those rotational, and it seems like postcards all come at the same time, whether that's the postal service's methodology or just the lady who walks my street. There, there's, I get, I get it all together. So a postcard this big, I'm not going to see, but if I pass by every day and I see that sandwich board, it's going to freak me out. And I'm going to look into it.
That's a very good, that's a very good comment in regards to that.
Yeah, I brought it up before, so I hope it's something that we could pursue.
Sure. It's, it's getting, and, and the way they're done in such a way that they could be used multi-time.
Right.
Because we're just talking about rezoning and call the phone number. Yeah.
Okay.
Good question.
I want to share that this, as Mr. Gusselson has shared, it came before the planning commission, and they held the public hearing, they made, deliberated, asked many questions, and then made, voted to make the recommendation that it comes before city council. Any zoning or rezoning question does require two readings, so we will not be voting on it tonight, it'll be before us next week as well, which allows further research and review. This, being on a thoroughfare that deserves a stronger, more thriving, commercial and industrial look, feel, operation, I am very positive to what it can mean for what is currently a vacant lot. I think it's a good new construction, and that Caesar Chavez is built to handle this matter of operation or other commercial and industrial operations. Councilman Goodman?
So just to ask a clarifying question, with this being a similar process to what we did for the conditional rezoning, there are still the, the steps that this, this company has to go through in terms of getting actually approved to, to build the site, to actually have their licenses and to operate within the city.
Correct.
So this right here is, again, solely for the rezoning.
Correct.
Something that is within the overlay district.
That is correct.
And I would assume that, obviously, and this being brought to us, they have, up, up until this point, complied with the rules that has been set forth by, well, what is city ordinance.
Correct. Very true. And then, as, as mentioned in the reviews, that obviously, the, the next step, obviously, following this vote from council, they would then submit and work with the clerk's office and submit their application in regards to grow and processing, complete all that information and all the requirements that are attached with that document. They would also have to come back in regards to site plan review. That would come back to the planning commission for, once they receive a, as the city clerk, Doyle represents, they get a conditional approval for a license, and they have to follow the steps in regards to, obviously, getting it through planning for site plan, and definitely getting through with fire, also in regards to dealing with the state of Michigan, and then also the building official and their construction plans.
Thank you. Any, oh, Councilman James, and then Councilman Parker?
Yeah, it's a little confusing to me, Vern, so I just want to clarify what, what we're looking at. First of all, you said that one of these parcels is in the current Caesar Chavez overlay district. So which, is that the C3?
Uh, yes, C3, if you...
C3 is in the, so how could it not be zoned properly if it's already in a overlay district?
Well, the, the medical marijuana overlay district was created, we didn't change any zoning related to that, we kept the existing zoning in place.
Oh, okay.
And so what, because, because of this type of use being a grow and processing, and according to our ordinance, it, those two uses are required to be in the M1 light manufacturing zoning district.
Okay, so the, the two parcels, the, the, this, one is currently at C3?
Uh...
And the other one is at R1?
Uh...
I guess I'm trying to figure out, what, what are they currently and what are they, what are we requesting? Because it's kind of confusing.
This graphic kind of simplifies it here. So the southern portion of the larger parcel is, is zoned R1 and also C3. And then there was a smaller parcel that was identified, that I had mentioned, that one is already, that is zoned C3 also, okay? So we're requesting that that C3, and we will be, the applicant does know that we will, we, we will require a lot split from them to split the properties, so all of those properties that we have in our proposed resolution, going from C3 to M1, would then have to be split. So a survey will have to be done, and that would be then submitted to the planning division for application, and then this sends it on to the county.
Okay, so these are going from C3 to M1?
Right.
And you're going to do the split. So what about the R1? What's the R1 going to?
Uh, R1 remains as is.
R1 will remain as is, so the, what you're asking us to approve is these, the split here that you need to do.
Correct.
And the change from C3 to M1.
Correct. So if you, if you noticed on our, on our presentation materials and also in our review, we talk about there is Lot 4 and 5...
Yes.
Of the larger parcel, which ends in 013...
Yeah.
Plus the entire smaller parcel that ends in 003.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I just, a couple of questions. This amendment or this requirement doesn't increase any of the things we've already approved, right? It doesn't increase any of the things we've already approved?
Increase? I'm not too sure.
Like the grows that we've already approved, the dispensaries that we've already approved? It doesn't increase anything to do with that, right?
Correct. And if, as you know, that in the city of Pontiac, the way the ordinance was read, there is no limit on grow and processing facilities in the city of Pontiac.
Okay. And you mentioned that it falls in line with the master plan, that's the current master plan, which is, at this point, outdated.
It's, it's still viable in regards to the intent and also in regards to the objectives.
Okay. And then you talked about not many employees would be working there?
They usually have, you know, 20, 25 or less, depending on probably various shifts, is my understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor?
I'd like to move to postpone.
I'll ask Clerk Doyle, because it requires two readings, do we even need to make a motion to postpone for one week, or it will inevitably do that by its nature?
Thank you, Mr. President, that's correct, because I have to post the summary before you can actually take action.
So no motion to postpone required, we're essentially, speaker's list exhausted, we're concluded the first reading, but thank you, Councilman Goodman, for looking out. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the city to exercise its right of first refusal to purchase one property from the Oakland County tax foreclosure list for $1,238.26 from the capital improvement fund?
So moved.
Sir? It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. That matter is now before us, the motion's before us for consideration. Give the floor to the administration for initial information.
Thank you, President McGinnis, and Deputy Mayor Stevens will speak to this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. So council, at last week's meeting, you did receive and approve a resolution to purchase nine parcels. This 10th parcel should have been on that list as well. There was a miscommunication on the part of the Oakland County Treasurer's Office. The list that I originally sent them had two parcels that ended in the same 026. The list that they sent back to me duplicated that parcel completely, and so I, what, what happened was, the list that you had had one parcel that was listed twice, and so I took that parcel off, whereas what should have happened was, I should have recon, recon, recontacted the county and said, hey, you sent me a duplicate item and left off one of the items that I originally sent you. But, so here is the item, and this will actually square off the property at the cemetery. So in total, there are four parcels next to the cemetery that we are buying. Without this parcel, what essentially would have happened is, you would have three parcels touching the cemetery, and then two of those parcels would have a little bit that's not touching the cemetery. So that is what is in front of you.
Further discussion on the motion before us. Rather straightforward matter, hearing no further discussion, and we obviously discussed the previous broader matter at previous council meetings. Roll call on adoption of this resolution, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven yeses, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at public comment. Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, we have Mr. Richard Bale.
Hello, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor, all the wonderful citizens of the city and beyond. Because of the funding we received, our team was able to be creative with the planning for our summer programs for the kids. Creativity lends itself to innovation, and so the young people will get the opportunity to do some activities they've never done before. In the past, we did not have the funding that allowed us to be creative. We're going to kick off the KFI Summer of Science with a blast, with our Rocket Challenge on Thursday, July the 21st, at Murphy Park. First place prize is $150 in cash and prizes to the winning team. I emphasize the word "team." We're going to, we're going to space, it's just a matter of how we're going there and who's going to take us there. We believe it should be our young people that take us there. Sign your kids up. What happens when you combine mechanical, electrical, electronic engineering systems? You get Megatronics. Our students are going to see firsthand when we visit OTAC Pontiac campus on Tuesday, July the 26th. Sign your kids up. The drones are coming on August the 9th at Wizner Stadium. Sign your kids up. We're going to take 25 to 50 students to United Wholesale Mortgage on Thursday, August the 11th, empower them with the engineering design process, and turn them loose on the city of Pontiac. Sign your kids up. On Friday, August the 19th, we're going to take some urban space here in the city of Pontiac and convert it into a living piece of digital art for the kids, just one night. STEAM ignite, glow scavenger hunt, electrifying, STEAM activities, glow DJ, and giveaways. The young people from Pontiac are going to learn about NFTs, learn how to create an NFT, and learn how to post and sell a NFT. Sign your kids up. Earlier, I mentioned funding, and we wanted to thank Mr. Kermit Williams, who is here tomorrow right now, for the block grant, which allowed us to provide STEM enrichment for the young people of the city of Pontiac that they will never forget. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for the impact you've made on our students moving forward. We would also like to take this opportunity to thank the new administration for making sure that we receive the funds without delay. And I want to present this award to Mr. Kermit Williams for his support over the years, and I'll leave you with one thing. Sign your kids up. City of Pontiac, because you helped to pay for it. Thank you. Mr. Williams, this is for you. I have a few minutes left, and I will say, please, sign your kids up, because the drones and the rockets are important. Thank you. KidsFirstInitiative.org, you can sign your kids up. If you don't sign up, we're not turning any students away, because we have some funding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jolanda, is it, Kita?
Kita.
Oh, I got it right.
Good evening, council members, mayor and deputy mayor. My name is Jolanda Kita, and I live in the Unipar area of Pontiac. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm here because I am facilitating a seminar on Saturday at the, at the library for ADHD, adults with ADHD. This is being, it's a part of a bigger program being sponsored by ADA, which is Attention Deficit Disorder Association. It's a national organization for adults with ADHD. And this seminar, it's, it's online, and it's basically three speakers talking about different aspects of awareness of ADHD, managing your ADHD and living with it. And in between the speakers, they'll have breakout sessions where the facilitators are talking, discussing what they, what they've heard with each speaker, and helping the people, the attendees, come up with ways to implement what they've learned. So all of this is happening online, but I'm actually going to facilitate a breakout session with the attendees at the library. And no one else is doing this, everything is being done online. Me and Mrs. Richardson, the chair, chairman, chairwoman of the board at the library, came up with this idea. I'm doing this because I've always been passionate about awareness of ADHD, especially with our underserved communities, and having been, I, I, you know, I was diagnosed with ADHD in my 30s and crashed and burned in college, because I didn't know I had ADHD, because I wasn't diagnosed then, and passionate about people being, the little people, you know, not your corporate executives or anything like that, but with awareness, with the nine-to-five people. We, if we can learn how to, learn how it manifests and learn how to control it, it'll allow us to be able to move up to corporate, you know, things. I never knew, I never thought that I would own a business. I started my own ADHD coaching business, but that was because I learned how, you know, how my ADHD works. So just wanted to bring that to the awareness of the council. I do have a flyer here, it's a, it's a draft, because we have to put the library's information on it, but I would like you guys to attend, and I would appreciate your support.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's Saturday at 1:00. It's scheduled to go five and a half hours, but it'll probably be like four hours, and there's going to be breaks in between.
Well, thank you for the announcement. Ms. Reed, Gina Campbell. Hey, Ms. Sharp, could you grab those flyers from her for us, please?
So, good evening, council president, pro temp, council mayor, deputy mayor in the residents of the city of Pontiac. I am here today just to bring awareness of Ms. Brenda Carter, State Representative Brenda Carter's having an event this Friday, February the 22nd, I mean, excuse me, Friday, July the 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. I just request that we get some community support. And why should we support State Representative Carter? She has brought $37 million to the city of Pontiac, she's brought 3.8 million in jobs, 1 million in honor of community health, a half a million for the homeless blueprint, and $200,000 to the Talent Development Corporation, TDC.
Hey, Ms. Campbell, just, you can't, you can't say supporter candidate from the podium?
Oh.
Okay, just want to, you can, you can tell us about your event.
Oh, well, that is what I was here for today. I didn't realize I couldn't say that at the podium, so please charge it to my not-knowing and not to my heart, and so I'll know in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Maxi.
Good evening, Mrs. and Mrs. Pontiac community at large and governance. No excuse. No excuse for senior abuse. If you know of anyone, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac Community at Large, the reason for our agency being at the library from 3:00 to 5:00 on Monday is to give you information as how to access attorney if you're 60 and over. We're not attorneys. We give information. Number two, I did send the information to Mayor Grimald, as I said I would on Monday, which outlined the abuse and misuse. See, you could pass the resolutions, talk about recreation all you want, and I appreciate that. Are you sleeping? As I'm not when my seniors are being abused. And I appreciate what y'all are doing, but seniors first. Now, the mayor has put me in contact with code enforcement. Good operations. Now, we're 1-1. Later on, we might have a great disagreement, but right now, it's all about our seniors. Secondly, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac and young people do not rent any place. I'm in any apartment from Great Lakes, Auburn Hills, I'm in Auburn, off of Martin Luther King, '92, '94, '96. We've had a lot of problems with misuse, abuse, demeaning, disgraceful. Up until the point, one of the seniors with the 25 breathing machines, I call them, thank God she's still living, that's halfway satisfied because they did not meet the date, and because code enforcement caught him red-handed, but still haven't put the money to where we could pay, where they could pay in a trust fund. But over and over again, I said this, before you rent apartments, whatever, come to the library for the dissemination of information. We have guidelines. You cannot continue to have these landlords. I named one tonight. Next week is going to be the landlord who had the tenant move. You hurry up and move because they got a paint. Did not board the house up, left the house unprotected. You will get his name next week. So the Waterford Fire Chief had to come in and board the tenant's house. For the next two weeks, I'll be, I will be calling out names. But again, on Monday, 3:00 to 5:00, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac and our young people that are renting apartments, come see us for dissemination of information. They said we are not legal attorneys because this is a protection problem. You'd be surprised what happened today when the senior had to move. Not move today, had to move out of apartment because they had, what do you call that, mole? And while she's out.
That does conclude your time.
She's being put out while she out of the apartment. Okay, yeah, I know my three minutes. I know, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gloria Miller. Ms. Miller, is there a phone or something that's left on the podium there?
Right in front of you.
Ms. Campbell or Mr. Maxi, do you have your personal effects? On the top of the podium, looks like there's a.
Oh, right here. Even higher. Is yours? Is yours? Oh, it's a phone right here.
Yeah, she's coming back now.
Oh, is this your phone?
Yes.
Okay. There you go. You're welcome. I'm sorry. I wasn't looking, Jasper, because I see that. And I'm so tall. Fix this for me, Jasper. Can you fix this? Put it for me. Because I'm tall. There you go. Thank you. Okay, as I go along, I'm going to count, I'm going to, I talked to the council people. And Mr. Mayor, before I finish, I noticed that when you addressed some of the things that I mentioned, and you don't say my name. I am a former council person. You can say my name. If I come here publicly, you can say my name that I said that to you, like some things I'm going to say to you tonight. First, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Carrington, the Panthers. The kids out there screaming and hollering for bottles of water and trying to get these kids into school, and that concerned me over the weekend. I'm like, so I did see this other gentleman come down, Mr. Bale. Did they receive their money? Would you address that when you get to your closing comment? Because I want to know what happened with the money because these kids still out here in the streets. And we talking about rec, Ms. James, rec. We got kids, I know you see them standing on these corners selling bottle of water. It breaks my heart that we gotta beg people for our kids to play in the league. Why they can't be excluded in the city league or give them some money or give them some money out here? This is ridiculous. And to bring, and no one asked me from this, from Murphy Park, I'm just doing this on my own. Why can't, you know, we talking about Ewalt Center. Ewalt Center been a problem ever since I've been in office. I always knew something was shady because there's too many people was trying to buy it and they couldn't. So this been going on way longer than last year. Back to Murphy Park, they need swings and stuff out there. Why can't they get anything? See, I done gave up on my park in District 5 because I knew already there was some shady mess behind it because we could never sell it. They brought it forth to the council, but we could never get it sold. The mayor would never present it to us. Now I know why. The second thing is, third, whatever. Councilman Parker, Pontiac Lake Road and Perry Street, signature investment. Please call them, tell them to cut that grass over there by Social Security Office, and I kept that cut. Them Emerson and University. I believe that's the city. Please get that cut. I get calls from that. And I also want to mention something else, and I'm doing this on my own. You are in, and maybe the mayor can give me a legal opinion on it. You are a pastor, true enough. Kermit Williams was a pastor, but you can't mix church and state. I noticed in some of them, and I guess a lot of calls, I said, I'll address it. Where you got things in about your church? I'm sure the resident didn't vote for you because you're a pastor, because you're a servant and you have served them. Because, see, your church is not in our district, and they're not going to come over there. They want you to come over to them. And putting things in about your church is political. This is a political atmosphere. This is not church. That's why it's that mimic for church and state. I did a lot of that reading last week of church and state. I'll bring it back and say some more about it. That's why you shouldn't mix it, too. And I'm just asking you, please don't put church stuff in here. I go to Welcome. I don't long ago there anymore, but I never put anything, I talked about Welcome, what they did. And as for the forensic audit, I look forward to, because there should be lots of prosecution up in that. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark.
Hi there. I'm talking as a resident. First, I have a.
Can you guys hear me?
I have an October 2013 Code Enforcement Manual, page 1, in the Melissa Code Assistant Maintaining and Enhancing the Health, the Safety, and the Welfare of the Community. Lack of care in which businesses, homeowners, rental properties, landlords, and tenants has infringed on the neighbors and neighborhood by not staying with the property line, not staying with the property line in which the landlord, tenant govern or control. The conditions can be considered to be health, safety violations, not just for the neighborhood but for the city, which I get the impression that you're saying you guys are supposed to protect us in every district. This is a landlord's home. She stays at Auburn Hills, 640 Sheffield. She has property in our area. Property off Franklin Road, District 1. This is the property that she has. Her home, her home at Auburn Hills looked better than today. This is today's picture of what she's presenting for us. That's what's making me angry. Not only that, we have code enforcement who does not see a problem with infringement in the neighborhood, within the community, within the neighbors. This is what we live with. South Side District 1, Franklin Road. Also abandoned cars, abandoned trucks, cars on flat. This is what we gotta live with. Is this what we pay our tax dollars for? Is this what we go for our councils for? We have seven council members that represent each district. I've been here long enough to understand that it looks nasty, and I'm not by myself. Perry looks nasty, Franklin looks nasty, every entrance from other cities look nasty. So what do we get for our tax dollars? What do we get for as citizens? What do the senior citizens deserve who helped build Pontiac? What do the future kids get? You see what I'm saying? You guys are in charge. So why is this young lady living in Auburn Hills? Her home is a 3,000-square-foot home, looking good, whilst we looking like this?
Thank you. Mr. Larry Jasper.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I want to start out by thanking the zoning commission yesterday. The people came together and helped a private investor actually get his zoning. He's been working on it for almost two years. But they were able to convince the planning commission that they needed to go for it, and they took a 6-0 vote in his favor. Mike, I'm sorry, President McGinnis, I just want to let you know you can't name the parking, the Phoenix parking structure. Excuse me, you don't have those rights. They were given away with the ex-mayor in the global settlement agreement. So you might as well not worry about that, no ordinance. Councilman Rutherford, if you want to take and change how the land's going to be given away, those 700 parcels and all this stuff, the city, you can write the resolution, you can give the neighbors the first right of refusal, and Mrs. Sharp can help you put that together so that you don't have to wait for the administration to tell you what to do. You can actually create yourself and protect the people. So there's a couple other things I wanted to point out about the GSA. Parking lease agreement is a binding confidential agreement, but the information in it is public. It's all been public. The promissory note is public, and people should be, are aware of this. They weren't told on the global settlement agreement that 5.432 million was a penalty. Taxpayers are private stakeholder or public stakeholders. Why weren't they told that? They were told they couldn't. But that's also public information because it's on the closing statement that was put on city council's website. The $1.5 million balloon on that promissory note, that's public, too. It was made public on February 24th, when they initiated and closed it on March 15th of 2021. There was also public notification that they couldn't pay. They didn't pay for the first year. That's why you have the balloon. But they paid it anyways. This is all in the forensic audit. You need to read the parking lease agreement because you're all bound to it. You're binded to it. The legal stuff that Mr. Parker just talked about, written by attorneys, that was written by a dozen attorneys. I tore it apart, and I've been trying to bring it to the city, and the people are finally realizing that a lot of things going on in the back door. Get your documents. Go through them. Read the global settlement agreement and know what you're responsible for. That's 7.952 million. The public stakeholder paid through taxpayer dollars. That would fund a lot of kids, right? How many people could have free sports? We used to give it to them in the city. You're running a 6.2 budget, and you're not using anything. Grass is still too long. Why? I don't understand it. Tow those cars, put them in the junkyard. It takes nothing. It's going to cost a little money. Take a little time, but you're the council members. You've been elected by the people. You have the public interest. Take care of it, please.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment.
All right, we are now at Council Communications. The city council's outreach specialist position has been posted, accessible on the city's website. Oakland County Tax Foreclosure Auction is conducted online. An advance bidding is now open through August 12th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. at tax-sale, or I should say, tax-sale.info. Active bidding begins at 10:00 a.m. and continues until 7:00 p.m. on August 12th of 2022. For interested bidders without internet access, a phone bidding system is available by calling 800-259-7470. For more information, visit tax-sale.info or contact Oakland County Treasurer Robert Wittenberg's office by phone at 248-858-0611 or email treasurer@oakgov.com. This year's City of Pontiac Pride and Beautification Award nominations are now available at Pontiac City Hall in the council offices or on the city website at the council webpage and in your most recent water bills from the Oakland County Water Resources Commission. We include it in the mailing. New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church Vacation Bible School, July 19th, 20th, and 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., held at 124 Prospect Street in Pontiac. Pontiac School District has a job fair in person on July 21st of 2022, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m., held at the Odell Nails School District Administration Building, 47200 Woodward Avenue in Pontiac. New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church has their annual community picnic, July 23rd, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m., held at 124 Prospect Street in Pontiac. Pontiac Transportation Museum has their Cruze and Clues, July 23rd, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at 250 West Pike Street in Pontiac. The next Pontiac City Council meeting is July 26th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m., which is next Tuesday. And as a reminder, due to Election Day, the following council meeting is Thursday, August 4th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Oakland County's Historical Society has their 5030 Annual Summer Ice Cream Social, July 30th and 31st, 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. each day, held at their Oakland History Center, 405 Caesar E. Chavez Avenue in Pontiac, free and open to all. Pontiac Transportation Museum has their open house during the Woodward Dream Cruise, August 20th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. at 250 West Pike Street. Oak Hill Cemetery Walk is September 18th, with walking tours at 2:00, 3:00, and 4:00 p.m., held at Oak Hill Cemetery, 216 University Drive, Mayor Grimald, Mayor's Office, Communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we've mentioned at prior council meetings, we have a town hall meeting tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., that's Wednesday, July 20th, to learn more about the proposed development, the shores, at the old Lakeside Housing Project site on Crystal Lake. That will be at the Bowen Center. In addition, this Friday, July 22nd, will be the Arts Crawl in downtown Pontiac, and that is presented by the Pontiac Arts Commission. Should be a lot of fun things happening, 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. this Friday, July 22nd, in downtown Pontiac. Speaking of the Arts Commission, we have a number of upcoming law and share concert series events. The next one is July 28th at 6:00 p.m. at JC Park, featuring Accent Pontiac and Pancho Villa Skull. The next one after that is August 11th at 6:00 p.m. at the Oakland History Center at 405 Caesar Chavez, featuring Paula Michelle and our very own Quincy Stewart, followed by August 25th at 6:00 p.m. at Murphy Park, featuring Jill Marie Hamilton, followed on September 8th at 6:00 p.m. at Charlie Harrison Park, featuring Gwen Fox. And last, but certainly not least, the September 15th event at 6:00 p.m. at Rotary Park in Pontiac. And I don't know if the performer at that event has been made public or not yet, but stay tuned. And a couple of other items, they are the.
24?
Pardon?
Number 24 on your agenda?
Well, yes, we have a Pontiac Planning Commission meeting. I think it's listed inaccurately in the agenda. It's going to be August 3rd, I believe, of 2022, at 6:00 p.m. right here in City Council Chamber. So that is the next Pontiac Planning Commission meeting. We also want to remind folks, as we have before, that it is not too late to sign up young people for the Summer Youth Recreation Program. We do have over 750 participants or enrollees, but there's another month left because that summer. that Summer Youth Rec Program runs through August 20th. So we're, uh, almost exactly halfway through that program. If you have young people who want to participate, go to pontiacrecreation.recdesk, R-E-C-desk, dot com, or you can call 248-758-3037, 248-758-3037. Uh, I do have upcoming brunch and community conversations with the mayor events. The next one is Saturday, August 6th, two Saturdays from now, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Kappa House at 200 Earl Moore. Uh, the subsequent ones after that will be September 8th, excuse me, September 10th, uh, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Ruth Peterson Center, and October 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Bowens Center. We do have not just an opportunity to have very free-flowing, informal conversation with me, but, uh, also, uh, pretty robust food. Uh, the last one that we did, uh, had everything from eggs, to a potato, to shrimp and grits, uh, inclu, and beyond. So we had a number of other, uh, items as well. I can't promise exactly what'll be on the menu at the future events, but we will give you a substantive breakfast, I can guarantee that. So look forward to seeing folks come out to some of those upcoming events.
Thank you. With that, we are now at closing comments. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First and foremost, and perhaps most importantly and urgently, I do want to urge residents to pay attention and abide by road construction signs. Um, we, uh, that's particularly true where we have some bridge construction, including on University Drive. Where you see road close signs, there is a reason for that, and if you disobey those signs, or go around those signs, you do so at your own risk. We just had an incident this morning where a person on a moped ignored those signs and was injured, and emergency services had to be called. Uh, and again, you know, maybe the first time you go around these signs, uh, it's just in the pre-construction phase, and you don't experience a problem, but next time you do it, uh, the bridge may be out, and you may, uh, fall to your severe injury or worse. That's true really on any street where you see road close signs. Please, please abide and obey those signs because you ignore them at your own risk and safety. Secondly, a member of the public, uh, has brought up now a couple of times, in connection with the Phoenix Agreement that was, uh, approved by the previous mayor and, uh, voted in favor of by a majority of the previous city council members, a $5.4 million payment. Uh, that is accurate, that, uh, the agreement that was entered into by the previous mayor and the, uh, a majority of the previous city council members did provide for this city, starting in February of this year, to make a stream of payments totaling $5.4 million to the previous owners of Ottawa Towers. And that's something that we, meaning council, and, uh, we in the mayor's office, have talked about publicly at a meeting during the budget process, so this is not the first time we've brought this up. We brought this up publicly, uh, before the member of the public brought it up. But those payments, although the agreement was entered into, uh, a year and a half ago, or a little more than a year and a half ago, those payments were not scheduled to start until February of this year, about six months ago now, uh, and those, uh, payments did in fact start, uh, every month. So again, this is something that council and I talked about publicly a couple of months back, but that is, uh, very true, and that was a binding agreement entered into, again, by a majority of the previous council and the previous mayor. Um, in regard to easements in Galloway Lake Park, a member of the public, uh, expressed that all documents signed by the previous mayor were drafted by the city's attorney. That does not appear to be the case with these easement documents. Uh, the easement documents say on them directly that they were drafted by someone at the Water Resources Commission. So I want to be clear about that process. The easements themselves seem to, uh, purport to have been drafted by someone at the Water Resources Commission, which is what I would expect, because normally easements are drafted by the person who's getting the easement. Whether or not the city's attorney at the time that the previous mayor signed those easements was aware of them or reviewed them, uh, we have not yet determined, but, uh, again, we'll be digging more into this. We just learned of some of the details about this yesterday. Uh, in addition, I want to speak, uh, briefly to a couple of properties that have been eyesores and have been blighted here in the community. These properties were, uh, brought to my attention by, uh, Council President Protem Carrington, and I want to thank him again for bringing, uh, these items to our attention. One of these items is 39 Ivy Street. Um, I've learned since this was brought to my attention yesterday that that property was once upon a time slated for demolition as part of Batch 17, uh, a group of properties that's currently in the process of being demolished in the city. Some of those properties have already been demolished, some have yet to be demolished. But it was removed from that, uh, list of demolition properties, uh, approximately a year ago, uh, under the previous administration. I'm not entirely clear why that decision was made, but for whatever reason, that decision was made. And when all of us took office this January, that was not included on the list of properties slated for demolition. And as a result, it was not included on the list of properties to be demolished by the demolition contractor, who was approved, uh, by City Council on February 1st of this year. Uh, the other property that Council President Protem brought to my attention is 124 Oliver Street. That was included on the list of demolished, uh, the list of properties to be demolished. Uh, but it, along with two other properties on that list, uh, went into tax foreclosure on March 31st. And, uh, it appears, based on at least one Court of Appeals decision, that when properties that are slated for demolition, uh, go through tax foreclosure, or, or are deemed to be tax foreclosed, that we have to begin that foreclosure and condemnation process again. So we are going to do so, uh, immediately and forthwith, and as speedily as possible within the confines of the law. So we hope to have these slated once again for demolition in very short order here in the next, uh, two to three months. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Next, Clerk Doyle, your closing comments.
Uh, Mr. President, um, I want to inform the, uh, community, the, um, C. Clerk's Office newsletter is out. This is really a guide to the, um, August 2nd, um, election. As most of you know, the city, redistricting process as a result of the 2020 census, we've reduced the number of precincts in the city from 21 to 18. Um, so inside the newsletter is the, uh, precinct map. It tells you, um, shows where all the precincts are located. It shows the, uh, location of the polling locations, uh, information about absentee voting. It also includes a sample, uh, ballot in there as well, um, too. Every household in the City of Pontiac will receive this newsletter, and then it will be followed by a new voter registration card. So every voter in the city will receive a new voter registration card as well, too. So we put that on the newsletter, so because the voter registration cards are postcards, we didn't want you to just simply misplace them, so it shows on the newsletter, um, make sure you're on the lookout for your voter registration card, which will list your new, um, polling, uh, location. The clerk's office will be open the weekend before the election, on Saturday, July 30th, and Sunday, July 31st, from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. for absentee voting. Uh, in-person absentee voting is available now through August 1st at 4:00 p.m. The ballot drop boxes are open. You can return your absentee ballot to any, um, drop box now through August 1st. On Election Day, August 2nd, you will have to return your absentee ballots to the clerk's office by 8:00 p.m. for your vote count, and you can also vote in person at your new assigned polling location, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, and this is a very thorough and informative document, so hopefully it's a good resource for our residents. Uh, closing comments for City Council? We give the floor to Councilman Parker, District 5.
Thank you, brother President. Uh, and first, I want to thank Pastor Barry for coming in and giving us the invocation today. We certainly appreciate your presence, sir, and the fact that not only did you do our invocation, you stayed for the entire council meeting, and we do certainly appreciate that, sir. I just want to remind everybody that today, the July 19th is Nelson Mandela Day.
That's right.
And so just in close, as I close, I wanted to say a couple of things that he said. He said, "It is in your hands to make a better world for all who live in it. Overcoming poverty is not a task of charity, it is an act of justice." I want to remind those who, uh, who drive through or happen to be passing through District 5, that we have called the sheriff and let him know that there's certainly speeding going on on Kettering Road, there's certainly speeding going on on, on Bay Street, and they are watching and observing, and we'll ticket you if you continue. Also, please observe, as the mayor has said, the signs that are posted on, on university, particularly the road signs and the directional signs, because if you go down speeding on, on Palmer Street to the dead end, the neighbors gonna call the police on you. So please be aware of those things. And lastly, uh, I just wanted to just say to, to all of those who are here, uh, as we look at what's going on in the city, and I know a lot of things have been reported to the DPW Department, they are patiently working on them, I want to thank this council, I want to thank the mayor and the deputy mayor for all that they do to try to keep up with all that needs to be done. I want to thank our council, Brett Nicholson, for the, 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 the leadership he offers for our, our council, that he does the, um, financing property, I think it is, financing HR, yeah, HR property that he does, because he does keep all of the financial issues, first and foremost, on our docket, and we do talk about them at our meetings, so I do want to say thank you for what you do. And lastly, I want to thank the entire council body for the effort they put in each and every week, each and every day, to try to make our city better. They get challenged, they get talked about, they get criticized, and yet they come every day to do what's best for this city regardless of what people are saying, and for that, I say thank you. And so I say, in closing, have a good evening, Pontiac. We are here to work, not to criticize. Have a great day.
Councilwoman Kathleen James, District 4, your closing comments.
Uh, yes, um, I, uh, our District 4, uh, community meeting will be July the 21st, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. It will be a Zoom meeting, and, uh, if you want to participate, please call me at 248-425-4663, or email me at the, uh, City of Pontiac email address, kjames@pontiac.mi.us, and I will send you, be happy to send you the link. Um, I just want to make a comment on the issues relative to Galloway Park. Uh, I, I think really, one of the root causes of why we continue to experience these things as a community is that we, you know, we allow things to sit too long. We, we just do not act in our own behalf like we should. Uh, we've got Ewalt Center, it's been boarded up for 10 years. 10 years. Still no decision, no, make a decision! No decision on what you're going to do with it. You have a beautiful park, that anybody that drives through Galloway would ask themselves, "Where am I?" You forget you're in Pontiac, it's that beautiful back there. And yet it sat for years, long before the present councilperson and the different ones who have, you know, asked and talked about that park, going back two or three council people have talked about, what, you know, what can we do with this park? And yet, no action, no decision, no, you know, we just allow things to sit. And then when these kinds of things happen, that somebody else sees our value, sees what we have that's valuable, and say, "Hey, you know what? I can put that to use, you know, why don't I just sit here and write this little easement up of what I can do?" And all of a sudden, we're upset. But you know what? I am equally upset with the fact that we will not make a decision. And that's because of constant big, constant argue, back and forth, our unwillingness to pull together as a city, to do what is in the best interest of the city. And that's our challenge. That's our challenge. That, that's, that's a basis that I ran, to say, "Hey, it's time for a change, it is time for us to change how we do business. We can't do it fighting and pulling at each other. We have got to be able to come together, we have got to be able to talk through these problems, and we have got to be able to make decisions together." That's my closing comment.
Protem William M. Carrington, District 6.
Uh, thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to, uh, address a comment that was, uh, the ex-councilwoman Miller, um, uh, sent to me, um, uh, concerning the Pontiac Panthers. Actually, I'm a member of the board, uh, we do have a president, uh, that's been in contact with the administration. Um, to receive those funds, it is actually an invoice process that we have to adhere to. Uh, currently, we have not sent any invoice to, uh, the City of Pontiac, but that will happen as soon as the season starts with those invoices. Also, the $10,000 is just a drop in the bucket that it takes to run a season. Uh, it costs over $44,000 to run our team league during the summer. Uh, so parents and volunteers decide to do fundraising on their own. We don't ask anyone to do any fundraising, because we also look to other organizations to, uh, offer funding. But the parents themselves take upon themselves to go out and raise money for the organization. I just wanted to say that. Also concerning the two properties, I, I think the president, I'm sorry, I thank the mayor for actually, um, uh, he was my call to actually find out a lot of more details concerning those particular, uh, properties. Uh, the Ivory Street property actually has a rehab agreement on that, so I want to make sure that the community understands that it's a rehab agreement on that particular property, so that will not necessarily come down due to, uh, being demoed by the City of Pontiac. Uh, I have talked to the organization that actually, uh, owns that particular, uh, property. They say that they can get it done by the end of the year, so, uh, and they hoping to put a family into that particular, um, uh, home, so I'm hoping that as well. I'd rather see the home go up and it be used as a, a single-family home than destroyed if we can make that happen. But I'm also concerned, I'm, I'm, I'm just equally concerned in making sure that we get rid of all the blight in our community, because those that pay taxpayers, uh, that, those that are taxpayers shouldn't have to live by these structures that have been there five, six, and 10 years. So we have, as a city, we have to make sure that these particular companies honor those rehab agreements. Um, I was very excited, uh, last week was a lot of things going on in the 6th District. We had the I-75 basketball tournament where teams came from I-75, all along I-75, came into Oakland Park for a tournament, and of course, the City of Pontiac team won it for the second time, second year in a row. So, uh, I commend those. Also, I like to commend, um, Dennis Thompson, uh, and that particular organization, that once I, I did get some calls from the residents concerning illegal parking, blocking driveways, and I was able to talk to him as well, as when I got there, Oakland County Police was already there. So we had a great conversation on making sure, uh, that the organization actually follow, uh, making sure that this residents can get into, in and out of their, uh, streets to their homes. Uh, also, the next day I went back, um, after the event was over, and the park was clean. Um, so the bags and everything were just stacked up for the city to pick up the next morning. So I commend that organization as well. Uh, it's very imperative, uh, that as we use these parks, any organization, family, please make sure we clean up our parks. If not, community organizations actually go into those parks and clean it up. They don't get paid, not a singles, like a single dime. And it gets tough, especially if you have, uh, program after program each week in those parks. Uh, we definitely need to make sure that, um, it allows, uh, the next group to actually use those parks and they clean. Good night.
Councilman Michael Goodman, District 3. Councilman Mikhail Goodman, District 3.
So tonight, we'll not have any of my usual heaviness. I will say, I appreciate, you know, all the love and kind words that I had last week not being here and being in DC. I guess, just to keep it simple, as a councilperson, please continue to send me any complaints and concerns that you have in the district, because I want to keep doing the work. Today, I went to the Baldwin Center to go hang out with some of the students who are in their after-school program and to see the facility. And, you know, while I was there, I got a chance to talk to a lot of students ranging from kindergarten up to middle school, so the same age range that I taught not that long ago. And being able to hear, you know, talk to them and hear what they want to know and what they have to say. And then just realizing that part of the job is still going to people and listening to them and asking them what they want to see changed. And in this case, for me, it was students who, you know, have lived in this city, who go to schools in our district and outside of it, who live in the district directly, who, they themselves know what things will change for them when things begin to change for their parents, for their family, and for the community. So with that, I just say, like, please continue to help me do my job to help you, because there is nothing more than I want to do than to make the city a better place by working with my residents. With that, also remember to vote in upcoming weeks. It's extremely important, always do it, every election, every time, as Kermit would say. But with that, oh, also, the District 3 meeting for, that was supposed to happen this Friday, is going to be postponed because of the art scroll. So look forward, look for more information on the next date for that. But I am done.
I want to share something that straddles District 3, 2, and 1 that caught me, caught my attention. There is a road closure, a new road closure this week at Johnson Street at the rail crossing. So just, just near Cass, until August 12. So that's literally at the border of 1 and 2, but across the tracks and you're at 3. So that impacts a lot of people's commutes, so does the train when it's running. But just want to make sure you know that that is, that road is closed, closed, for them repairing that rail crossing. Councilman Brett Nicholson, District 2.
I have some thank yous. This week, I specifically want to thank you to Maddie McHoney-Hatchett that alerted me to an issue over in Stonegate. There was some, whenever we have construction going on, which I'm glad to see some construction there, the, when we're digging a basement, we have to put up barriers. The barrier was about this tall. And the resident next door had their child on a leash because they were afraid that they would, this is a woman who had her first baby at 48 years old. So, I mean, enough, right? I mean, that's enough. And then you've got this humongous hole next to your house. And Janice and Larry were awesome. Janice got right on it, found out who the developer was, got them on the phone. Larry met them at the site, gave them the instructions on what needed to be done. So we're looking forward to those enhancements happening, but they were awesome to work with. Code enforcement, Tammy Cooper continues to be an amazing advocate for any of my concerns. It comes to grass. This week, we've had grass, a lot of vehicles being towed, right-of-way, huge amounts of dumping and right-of-way that was taken care of. So I just wanted to give her a shout out. She is so quick and thorough, knows everybody there is to know, and is able to immediately get on the phone and make sure that those things get accomplished. In DPW, Vince and Al. Al has been working on some very long-term lighting projects and issues along Orchard Lake Road. If you drive down tonight, you'll see, previously I announced that the lights were back on, but they were our yellow dim older lights. Those have all been replaced with LED, bright LED lights right in front of the cemetery where we've been having a lot of vehicle accidents. So I'm happy to see that work all completed. Want to give a special thank you to Coleman Yocum and the MICA 6 community. They donated, or they were able to organize a donation of mounds. If you go perhaps past Indian Village Park, you'll see big, huge mounds of wood chips. The swings were about four and a half feet off the ground. So you'd have to be a middle schooler to be able to swing at Indian Village Park. So they have donated all, they're all out there now. MICA 6 is organized, the spreading of that happened tomorrow. So that is a tremendous improvement to make sure that the kids can enjoy those swings, which they also donated a few years ago, brand-new swings. So thank you again to Coleman and MICA 6 community. And here on Main Street Corridor, the Main Street program there also has volunteers that are coming to help out that project. Wanted to remind everybody that the District 2 advisory meeting is Monday, 7 o'clock at Golden Walsh, as usual, every fourth Monday of the month. And we are in the bocce ball courts now because we are much too large to be up front. And that's it.
Thank you. The Honorable Melanie Rutherford, Councilwoman for District 1, your closing comments.
The fruit of the spirit. Do you have love when you talk about the city of Pontiac? How about joy? I give you one more, it's called peace. Can you be peaceful in your approach? Can you show kindness when you are disagreeable? Do you know what goodness really means by being a good ambassador? Have you been faithful to the process of the healing and the restoration of the city you say you love so much, the city of Pontiac? Can you be gentle when you hear a no? And last, and certainly not least, it's called self-control. Can you have the self-control that it takes to truly lead? Because if you can't do that, you'll never ever be able to get anything done in the city of Pontiac. There are moments when I sit here and I'm so frustrated because I know what all of us do outside of here. First of all, this is a part-time job. Second of all, we take the full-time, we take a part-time job, we make it full-time and beyond that. And so when I say these things about people saying we're not cleaning up, especially in my district and District 1, I can't let you lie on me no more. Because I do ride-bys with Tammy Cooper, and I take pictures, and I post it on Facebook, and I send emails to Tim and the Caffani and the Carrington and the Michael. So you can't lie no more and say it's not being done. It may not be done in your process, but it's being done. It is what it is. And I don't disrespect old folks, but I will check someone if they try to get checked for me, because I don't play about that, because that's just me. And so when you say you can't reach me, I even have stickers that have my number on there. Anytime you want to talk to me, you can call me anytime. And then you say, "I still can't reach you, you're lying." Because on the back of my shirts, it say my name and my phone number. So again, who you calling? Because you definitely not calling me. There's a point where we have to get tired of being mad because you're not in charge and let somebody do their job. That's why we have meetings, everyone, and to say there's not been cleanups, like the CDC, the one I did in May, or let's say about the one I did in June. And the reason why I'm doing downtown is because I'm doing every part of my district and not just one part of my district, because I don't show favoritism to nobody, and I ain't. Because I believe in using the fruit of the spirit in my actions and my deeds, because I donate to the seniors, because the seniors are the backbone of this community. That's why the buses were paid for. It's a District 1 project. I did it right. I went through the process. I'm sorry if you're mad. Get over it. Because I did it the right way, not in an agenda way. And last, but certainly not least, if you didn't know, that I have my meeting every fourth Saturday, June, July 30, excuse me, I want to get it right, from 11:01. And the reason why I do that is because I can take what you give me, but I will not ever in my life take being lied on. Because my name is Melanie Cherie Rutherford, AKA Mill, and I am, until they vote me off, the councilwoman for District 1. And to that, I say, "Good night."
With 12 seconds to spare. Good evening, I'm Mike McGinnis, council representative for District 7. Want to share that the, for District 7 residents, the East Side Community Meeting next up is Monday, August 15th. That is always the second Monday of every month, 7:00 p.m. at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, 351 Prospect Street. All are welcome, all District 7 residents and all neighbors in the very broad sense of District 7. The focus for this month always is driven by the community concerns and complaints and observations that are shared each month, but also will be hearing from those that are working on the Pike Street improvements. Pike Street throughout District 7 will be redone, it's very much needed. And so that's in coming years, and so this is for us to hear some of the logistics of that and what the finished product would look like and how that interacts with the connector for the Clinton River Trail, which adds walking pathway, beautiful amenities for District 7's neighborhoods and those visiting our district. Murphy Park, it was shared this evening about the swings. We have submitted those, the swings feedback for correction in addition to the slides and other overgrowth. There recently was some damage by a vehicle at the entrance. Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for first flagging that. That was submitted as well for resolution. Speaking of parks in District 7, you may not know it if you haven't been there, but even if you've driven by, there is a park at Elm Street in South Jesse by the name of Steed Park. It doesn't presently have its name identified or also the backstory that goes along with it. It was over 30 years ago that a young man, Michael Steed, died. He was murdered there by gun violence, shot to death when he was at that park. And the park was named in his honor. I spoke this week with his mother, who's still with us, and Mrs. Steed and I, based on the feedback from District 7 residents, it's something that came out of the East Side Community Meetings where they would like to see that story amplified, the backstory and the motivation for the park. It's where a lot of anti-gun violence organizing, community organizing happened in the community through the decades. And so we want to bring that park into full life and vitality. It needs a lot of love. And I spent some time this weekend doing some cleanup, and that was inspired in part because the Elam Family Block Party had a very successful continued annual offering again on South Sanford. But while I was there, I took a lot of pictures and then over the weekend, spent some more time in the vicinity to improve that area. Finally, it was requested that I put out for the record, because there was a comment last week that alluded to the possibility that the fireworks that came out of the City Hall parking lot were the city's doing, and we just want to put out for the record, it wasn't. And it was the Moyet family, Antonia, Shayna, and Stephen saved up their funds to make that display happen. So just want to correct the record, so that way their hard work was acknowledged. And it wasn't us. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Some support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Rutherford, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 8:57 p.m. Thank you all for your time and your love of our great city.